Hello and welcome to our Tuesday evening workshop. We're joined here by two fine gentlemen from our Economic Development Department. I'll let you to introduce yourselves and kick things off.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Nate Libby. I'm Director of the Department of Economic and Community Development. I'm joined by our new Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development. Very briefly, a bit on his background, John Blaze comes to us most recently at Auburn's Planning Office, where he was Deputy Director. Prior to that, he's worked in civil engineering, a member of the Maine National Guard and Reserves, former Deputy Director of the State Bureau of General Services. On the side, he's a developer and a main guide. He brings a wealth of background and talent and expertise to organizations. So John Blaze is going to lead us through this presentation and we're happy to have discussion with you in a little bit.
Thank you, Nate. Mayor, Council, this is the downtown parking revamp. Everything about this conversation today will be about parking and making it more accessible for the business district. City staff met with the business district back in September of 2024. And again, we met with the Downtown Lewiston Association this past April. And they have this parking revamp that we're going to present today. They've got full support of that, of this option. Really, this is unlocking the power of free parking is a critical step to support and revitalize our local downtown businesses. As you can see, in the 1950s, Lisbon Street was jamming. And we want that for Lewiston here in 2025, so we're going to move that forward. So we'll cover the proposal, removal of all the quarter-fed parking meters. This is an antiquated way to allow parking in the city. We have a process for that that we've set up, working across departmental efforts between Public Works. We got Kevin Gagne here, the Police Department, Lieutenant Carly Connolly was also involved. And then Nate was part of the original discussions. And then we had the City Administrator O'Malley was involved and Director Morez was involved. So this was across many departments across the city. And we're really just, you know, kind of the face of the cross-sectional connection between the business owners and the city. Next is the proposed parking amendments for the downtown streets. We'll go over some of those, proposed parking amendments to the parking garages. And then we've already got, the council already approved the creation of wayfinding directional signs. We'll talk a little bit about that and our process for an RFP. And then lastly, a marketing plan. You know, we want this to be inviting for the business owners and for people that are visiting and the people that live here. So we want to make it easy. We want to make the businesses accessible. And this is really what this is about. So they put together a meter inventory. This basically gives you all the meters that are across the city. There's 215 meters. We're estimating this cost to be about $20,000. That's really just for materials. The work itself would happen for the removals of the meters would come from PW staff. So that's just staff time. So our timeline for the meter removal would be, if approved, obviously by City Council. We'd have the two readings, May and June, this being the workshop. And then signed amendments, we do that basically in a week. So each of these signs, basically the amendment is really just a sticker. So going from one hour to two hours is just a matter of applying a sticker. Should be pretty straightforward for folks. And then bagging the existing meters, they may not exactly have bags in particular. This was originally discussed. They may consider capping it. They may consider tagging it as not usable. So we have an immediate response after the council approval. So we're going to identify that very quickly. And then the removal of the meters, which includes the poles, potentially the bases. The bases could be a little bit more complicated from an engineering standpoint. There could be a large concrete footer that may take some time. I think we're going to have to work that through with PW and engineering on what the best course of action for that is. But I think at this point, we're going to cut it off and probably epoxy the holes. So I think that's the quick fix. The parking amendment highlights, I'll just read down through this. Again, we talked already a little bit about the parking meters. We'll replace them with a free time and liberty parking. And essentially, the odd number side of Lisbon Street from Chestnut Street to Main Street is going to be 15 minutes. All even-numbered side of Lisbon Street from Maple Street to Main Street is two hours. All Canal Street is two hours. All Park Street is two hours, aside from a few spots in front of City Hall for an hour, in front of Park and Pine and for 15 minutes. So there's some, a little bit different there. Cedar and Lincoln Street has a permitted lot for two hour. Those will be, there's 15 parking spots in there. Change the loading zone on Main Street to 15-minute parking. That's the Blue Jag Coffee Shop. This was really driven by some of the conversations that we had with merchants and requested by some of the business owners. Change the loading zone on Ash Street to a two-hour parking should allow for three additional park spots. Change one parking meter time space on Park Street in front of Mancini's Italian Deli to 15 minutes. And then change the one parking meter time space on Middle Street in front of She Doesn't Like Guthrie's to a 15-minute parking space. Lieutenant Connolly, Carly Connolly, put together the amendment details. That will be part of the specific items that will go to council for the council readings. That'll be part of the documents that will be included in the packet. So we did include it as an item that we could review in the first reading if the council so chooses. In addition to that, we've put together a pretty extensive GIS mapping that basically maps out all of these changes. I know that these are rather difficult to see on this slide. Nate had suggested that we break them up into four quadrants. We could certainly do that for the first reading. But this kind of gives you a highlight of, you know, what was there before and what's going to be new. So just kind of giving an example for Lisbon Street and Park Street and Middle Street and Oak Street. Again, it's really the text that I read to you guys is really the application on this GIS map. So we do have it pretty well documented and our GIS folks helped us out with that and they did a fantastic job. The next is the parking garage amendments. Really, the highlights here is anything that was under two hours is going to be free. Currently, right now, it's one hour. These affect all the parking garages. We're proposing Centerville Garage, Chestnut, Lincoln, Oak Street and the Southern Gateway. In addition to that, we're looking at free parking on the weekends and then changing that from 6:00 PM to 5:00 PM. So those are the big amendment highlights. I've got, the next slide will go over what would be the temporary parking sign. And then some information. We've instituted some QR codes. If you have your cell phones or if the public has their cell phones, these QR codes would give informational information for purchasing a parking pass for business owners. We have launched, this is Lewiston, in hopes to, you know, give the visitors more easier viewshed of what the city is doing, what are the business opportunities, what's happening in Lewiston, more of, you know, business-friendly type of atmosphere. So we hope to get just stickers made up for temporarily. And these would be adhered to the existing signs. So we'll be able to, we're trying to lay out more information, make information more accessible. And rather than trying to drill down through our, you know, the website, we want to go directly to what's most important, what's happening. Everybody wants to know what's happening in the downtown. What are the exciting things that are coming? Maybe we're launching the Bloom Festival through a QR code. This is really part of the marketing of the city and, you know, bringing some revitalization back to the downtown. Next slide is really a signage. This is really the new signage that would be created throughout the whole city, particularly focusing on the downtown. We went actually to Portland today and the public parking has the big blue parking signs, right? It's very easy to see. It says "public." It's very noticeable. We want to have that accessibility here in Lewiston. We want to say, "We're open for business. Here's the parking signs." You know, are they full? Are they open? Are we open? You know, there might be a little bit of messaging on the bottom of that parking sign that may say, "At this time, it's free," you know, or "For the day, it's $6 for the day." We get a lot of day users. So there'll be some informational things that we can do for the parking signs. And then our wayfinding around the city. We want, you know, people visiting the city and the people that live here have an easy way to find businesses and an easy way to find their way around the city. For somebody that's coming, that's new, there's a lot of one ways. Sometimes it's difficult for navigation. We want to help with that. We really want to help with that. And I can say that the DLA Board was very excited when we presented this. They were excited to be part of this. We would write a RFP. We were expecting to have a design-build type program where we not only do the design, but that same merchant would consider the installation as well. This is a great way to deliver projects in the city, doing a design-build. I think that we found a lot of success in Auburn and we found a lot of success at the state doing design-build projects. We would select a bidder, establish a sign committee, present to City Council what those signs would look like, how it would look like in a viewshed from, we would have a lot of viewsheds in terms of walkability and putting you on the face of the earth and how it would look on the landscape. I think that would be really neat. And then obviously, we've already had the funding established in 2026. So we're ready to go. Come July 1st, if money's available, Economic and Community Development is ready to roll. We're ready to put this RFP out and deliver this project.
So this slide is just to summarize our proposal to you for your consideration. And, you know, tomorrow and the next day, if you're asked about, you know, what is this new parking plan about? This is the summary sheet. I think you're all familiar with the problem we're trying to address and that is the perception that parking in the business district is challenging. I don't think we'd say that's the reality, but that's the perception. And that's what we've got to try to address. The perception as well is that it's expensive to park downtown. The truth is, it's not, but we've got to tell people about that. The other perception is that the parking garages are difficult to locate. And I think there is some validity to that. But the map that we have up on the screen shows how, you know, fairly perfectly they are laid out. Each garage is within less than a four-minute walk from any particular downtown destination you might be trying to go to. So that's the perception that we're trying to deal with. And our solution has five basic points. Number one is we want to remove all those antiquated parking meters. Very few people have quarters on their person these days. The parking meter devices are so old that we have to source replacement parts on eBay because the manufacturer doesn't produce parts anymore. The person who's knowledgeable on how to fix these devices is nearing retirement age. So our proposal is to, let's get rid of them. Bangor does not have paid on-street parking. Augusta does not have paid on-street parking. Portland does, but I would suggest we're not quite there yet. Our parking garages are not at capacity yet. If we get to that point someday, I think in the future, that's when we introduce perhaps a payment system that involves, you know, credit cards and putting stickers, you know, on your vehicle, that kind of thing that you see in larger cities. But we're not suggesting we're there yet. Our goal here is to make it incredibly easy to park in the business district. So ripping out the parking meters and going to timed enforcement is our approach to solve that. In terms of the time spaces that we have now, it's really a hodgepodge. There's 15-minute, 30-minute, one-hour, two-hour. And there's no particular rhyme or reason to it, except that we think that system was developed over four or five decades where if somebody asked for a designation, it was given and that was repeated over and over. So we have this kind of Frankenstein of a system now. Our approach is to sort of start with a clean slate. And the overall goal is we're going to have two-hour parking and we're going to have 15-minute parking. Two-hour parking is if you want to go shop in a downtown shop or transact business with a lawyer or a doctor, or you want to have a meal. One hour is not enough, but two hours probably does it. So two hours is the general standard moving forward. 15-minute spots are for the growing Uber, DoorDash service that supports a lot of the downtown district businesses with pickups and drop-offs and takeout and that sort of thing. So two-hour and 15-minute is the general approach. There are a few exceptions based on some business needs and some city needs. Bullet point number three, parking enforcement transitions from basically checking all the quarter meters. That transitions from that to chalking tires and issuing tickets. And in discussions with PD, we feel that approach of losing that $25,000 or so in quarter revenue annually can be absorbed by ticket enforcement fees that are collected. We think that's a revenue-neutral approach. And so that's how we're proposing to deal with that item. Bullet number four, garage wayfinding and highly visible signage indicating parking is public and free. A lot of folks don't know that those parking garages exist. They're hard to identify from the streets. It's hard to know when you're approaching. Is this for public or is this a private thing? Our current signage is a bit confusing in that regard. The information about the fact that our garages are free during the nights and weekends is in very tiny print at the bottom of those signs that you can only see once you've approached the gate. So I think we need to do better at getting the word out that parking is free on the weekends. It's free during the evenings. And by going to 5 o'clock, that better lines up with the needs of the restaurant community down there. And then the final point is, we can do all this wonderful work, but if we don't tell the world that it's easy to park in the business district, then we haven't really done much. So we'd work with our communications department and our partners at the DLA and in the business community and through our various networks to get the word out that parking in downtown is a whole lot easier than it's ever been. So that is the plan. We're asking for your consideration and support. Appreciate John Blaze coming aboard just a couple of months ago and taking this project on and helping to facilitate the communication with the impacted members of the business districts, working through those requests and ideas, coming up with a consensus plan that also has the support of the various departments that he's listed. So we're happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you both very much. I really appreciate this. And thanks for reaching out to businesses. I think it's important to get our local businesses' input. Since I became mayor, this has been a reoccurring theme. I agree with you, Director Libby, that we actually do have parking downtown. And, you know, people have said like, "There's no parking downtown." I'm like, "We literally have five garages and plenty of on-street parking." So yeah, I am excited about the marketing and signage aspects of this plan. So thank you. Yes, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a slew of questions. What I'm going to do is just say what they are and I'll email them to you for answers so we don't monopolize the time for the rest of the people that are here. I would probably start out with handicap. 15 minutes is not going to work if someone's got to get out of their car to get a to-go bag or food. So I'm concerned with 15 minutes, quite frankly, all the way along the whole process. Where does business district start? I don't have an answer, no, I'll send it to you. Could some of the poles be used as markers? You're talking about removing them all, but maybe at street corners, we could have little plackets that say things, you know, like certain businesses are this way or that way. You know, I'd hate to see you remove them all, then later on, want to put some kind of signage in and direct people. You know, what about maps in parking garages? You're going to have on each level, so when someone comes in, like in a mall, you are here. And which way to go to get out? Because the parking garages are confusing. I parked there for three years. And depending what level you're on and which exit you come out of, it can be confusing where you want to go. Overall lost revenue, I would like to know about. How are you going to keep track of time? You must be hiring some Olympic runner because the length of the street, you can't walk in 15 minutes with a piece of chalk. I have a big concern with that with one person. You know, unless they're going to run down there and just hit every tire going down through, I think some consideration on how that might work. I just don't, I don't think it's possible, quite frankly, to even walk from here to the Main Street in 15 minutes and be able to mark all the vehicles. So I think that should be looked at again. That's really, those are items that I'd like to know. Are you going to sell the meters when you get done? I'd be first on the list. I'd like one for a gag, so I'm not going to lie. But getting rid of the meters, I have four. Okay, I'm not against this plan. I think that parking, I just think 15 minutes is probably not enough, in my opinion, when you think of people who are handicapped, older people, you know, want to get in and out of someplace. You know, you can't get out on the left-hand side of the street, even get across sometimes in 15 minutes to be able to get over there to get a sandwich or get a to-go meal to get back the other way, if they're going to use crosswalks. So unless you plan saying, "No crosswalks," you know, if you park halfway down with a bicycle places, there's a crosswalk. But between there and the courthouse, you can't get across. So to go there, come up and cross back over and go the other way, are we forcing people into a situation that might be unsafe? And I will forward all these to you in more detail. Thank you. The presentation was well.
Thank you.
Is there anything you want to say at the moment?
I believe Counselor Glant wanted to ask his questions and we will answer them later. We're happy to do that.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Roy.
Thank you. Great presentation. I liked it. I, like Counselor Glant, was thinking 15 minutes is not quite enough. I was thinking maybe 30 minutes because that gives you a little bit of buffer, right? That was my thoughts on that. What about winter parking? Will this affect what you've got laid out here? And again, you can email me these too. But I'm just thinking, working in the downtown business area for a while, winter parking was a challenge, so it doesn't seem to be that it'll affect that at all?
Kevin Gagne, Director of Public Works, is signaling no.
Okay. Because I just know that some parts of the, like some sides of the streets are closed to parking during December and March. So I was just making sure like this isn't going to affect any of that.
For the streets that we've described, I don't believe the winter parking restriction impacts any of these plans.
All right. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Counselor Herman.
Thank you and thanks for the presentation. I really like that things are getting simpler. You know, not so many different zones with different times and, you know, maybe there's a meter here, maybe there's no meter over there. And I think especially, we need to make sure that people are directed to the garages. I notice like coming down Lisbon Street, you know, I come down Lisbon Street and turn onto Pine Street a lot. And there's not really any signage that says where the parking garages are for people who don't know their way around. As far as questions, I did have a similar question to Counselor Glant about enforcement capacity. I realize it'll be, it'll be taking away the chore of checking meters and then turning that into, you know, checking for time limits. So it seems like it might be similar, but I am a little concerned about being able to enforce in that entire area. The other question I had was, will the parking restrictions on the street apply on weekends too? Because I know that's been an issue sometimes, especially on Lisbon Street with people parking, particularly residents parking on Lisbon Street for the entire weekend because they can. And I wonder if these will be applied seven days a week for the businesses that are open on weekends? And yeah, that's all I've got for now.
Counselor Najin.
First and foremost, kudos. It's good to see this getting moved forward. The downtown businesses absolutely need support in creating a draw for downtown. The parking meters as they are, I don't know how many times I parked at one that's just broken. And that's always a joy. But I do have a couple of things that kind of came, you know, came to mind. First and foremost, at some point in time, we truly do have to establish where our downtown business district and redevelopment zone is. Because as Counselor Glant had named, and also when we're looking at TIF focuses, all of those pieces. Where is the downtown? I know where I believe the downtown is. I want to hear from the Economic Development Department. I would suggest creating more parking spaces as well. Ultimately, one of the ways we could do that is removing the lines that are currently there. You can fit seven cars, compact cars in the space, you can fit three pickup trucks, right? So like ultimately, by removing those lines, which were drawn for like 25-foot-long, six-foot-wide cars, it's a very, you know, they're very strangely set up. We could get more parking on the street. I'd also say, even in front of Mancini's, that could afford two parking spots, possibly one on the other side as well. Slows down traffic because the street becomes thinner, just as a thought. Enforcement is, I think, going to be a challenge. And maybe we do need to look at public-private partnerships if we do, if we find that we're having a difficult time enforcing the time limits. And I just want to quickly hit, and I know that, because we've had a separate conversation about this, I know that the director disagrees with me, but the parking garages are an asset class and they're something that we have invested a lot of money in and continue to invest a lot of money in. They're also something that can generate revenue. Right now, I understand they're not full, but we're taking LCIP funds in order to fund maintenance for these garages. but we're taking LCIP funds in order to fund maintenance for these garages. And when you look at other communities, what they pay for parking versus what we're paying for parking in our parking garages differs. And so maybe it's appropriate to subsidize that parking in order to get people to use it, but it's not the true cost of those parking garages. And one of the challenges, when we get further down the road, if we decide to divest of this asset class, distressed assets generally generate less revenue in sales to private parties than ones that are well-maintained. And so I think anything that has a revenue capacity should probably try to be self-supporting when it can be. Although I do appreciate the fact that we wanna see development downtown, and we wanna support the businesses as well. So I think there's a balance there. I just wanted to voice my opinion on that on the record. But those are, that's my feedback. And again, you know, the wayfinding signage, all of those pieces. It's just long overdue, and I think it's gonna do a lot for downtown.
Further comments from the council?
We understand you have a busy evening, so we can wrap up here with the council, like, written responses to all the questions, and so that we can keep this project moving and advancing and bring it back to you in a couple weeks. Is that acceptable?
Sounds great to me.
Yeah, so it'd be great. When I send you my questions, I'll send it to the whole council as well, and the administrator, so that we're all in a loop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director, Deputy Director, thank you very much. Director Connor? Thank you, thank you for joining us. When you're ready, please kick us off.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is John Connor. I'm the Director of Planning and Code Enforcement for the city. And tonight, I have the privilege of presenting to you draft language for an ordinance pertaining to syringe service programs, also known as the needle exchange program. Why are we here? So why are we here tonight about this? Since 2020, according to the Maine CDC's own annual reports, Maine SSPs or syringe service program providers have a statewide delta, the difference between what has gone out versus what has come in, of nearly 1.5 million needles. That's 1.5 million needles in our parks, our streets, sidewalks, and curbside trash. That's 1.5 million needles that our public works and police departments have to pick up. That's 1.5 million needles that our taxpayers must pay to have disposed of. In 2023, the city of Lewiston alone had a delta of roughly 125,000 needles. We're also here at the request of our citizens and our businesses. I'm sure most all of you have, have been contacted by residents or businesses complaining about needle litter throughout the city. My office alone and the Code Enforcement Department, on usually a weekly basis, receives numerous calls from constituents, from citizens that are asking what we can do about the needle litter throughout the city. So those are the reasons why we're here for this particular ordinance. How did this ordinance come about? When it was brought to my attention, obviously, the first thing we do is look to other communities. We look through other communities in the state of Maine, and we look through other communities throughout the, the region of New England that may have already gone through this process and have their own ordinance. Three came to mind, or came to the top of the search. Manchester, New Hampshire was the first one. The second was Norwich Walk, Maine, and then the third was Sanford, Maine. I reached out to all three of them. I spoke to different members of their communities, whether it be the Health Department in Manchester, the Code Enforcement Office down in Sanford, and the Code Enforcement Office in Norwich Walk. Some of the things that, you know, we talked about was, what, what were the challenges going through the process? But my biggest question was, did it do its intended purpose? Did your ordinance do what it was meant to do? Manchester, New Hampshire came back and said that they gained oversight. New Hampshire's a little different than Maine. They, New Hampshire does not allow you to restrict whatsoever. So they, it gave the city more oversight, more accountability, more access to the providers. They said that the providers are actually willing participants, and so they are, they're happy with it thus far. They did say that they expect some revisions this year, and possibly going towards some sort of licensure. Norwich Walk was a little different. They don't have any SPPs in their community. However, they enacted their ordinance at the request of the local sheriff's office to give the local sheriffs and law enforcement an additional tool for enforcement. In speaking with the Code Enforcement Office down in Sanford, they gave indications that it's working. Obviously, it's fairly new. I believe it just went into enactment down there. But their Code Enforcement Office gave a story, and he said, I'll tell it to you like this. I've gone into a few residences or buildings that were on their dangerous building list that had become dens, if you will. And they'd gone in, their Code Enforcement Officers had gone in, and there were just thousands upon thousands of needles. Later on, after the enactment of their ordinance, they went back to check on that particular building, and they said that there were very few needles. But what they noticed was that the buckets that the SPPs were handing out were, they were filled in that building with needles getting ready to be brought back to the SPPs. So, or SSPs, rather, sorry. So in their mind, it's working from a boots-on-the-ground standpoint. So those are the, the three communities that we looked to for basically taking their ordinances and making an amalgamation of our own. I provided all of you a copy of a draft, and it is just that a draft. I think we've gone through a few different iterations since you received it. It has not been, none of the, the comments and suggestions that you guys have, those of you that have sent suggestions, have been added to it. We'll get to that at a later time. I'd like to discuss what this ordinance does or will do and what it will not do. What it will do, it will establish local oversight. It creates the framework for local regulation of state-certified SSPs operating within the city to protect public health, safety, and the environment. It will require dual authorization. Those that are certified by the state need to be certified by the city or licensed by the city. It will limit the number of providers to two within the city. It will mandate fixed locations. Each SSP must operate primarily from a single approved fixed location. It will specify permitted zones and buffer zones. SSPs will only be allowed into specific zoning districts, and they must adhere to the strict location restrictions, including being at least 1,000 feet away from schools, daycares, public parks, playgrounds, and libraries, and 200 feet from residential properties. It will set operational standards. The ordinance outlines clear requirements for applications, days and hours of operations, and comprehensive security measures for facilities and operations. It will regulate syringe exchange. It mandates a one-to-one exchange basis, meaning participants receive no more than one sterile syringe for each used one returned during a visit. It will support harm reduction. While regulating syringe exchange, it allows SSPs to distribute other harm-reduction supplies, like naloxone and alcohol swabs. It's consistent with their state certification and harm-reduction mission. It also requires SSPs to offer educational materials on disease prevention, safe injection, overdose prevention, and treatment options to them. It will require reporting and transparency. The operators must submit annual reports to the city council with aggregated, non-identifying data about their services. It will establish a fee and licensing process. An annual permit fee will be required, and a clear process for licensing application, reviewed by city departments such as police, code, and fire. And the city council will approve, approval is established. The licenses are valid for one year and require annual renewal. It will enable enforcement. The ordinance grants the city the right to inspect SSP premises and outlines enforcement measures and penalties for violations, including potential permit suspension and revocation. What this ordinance will not do, it will not authorize mobile exchanges. The ordinance explicitly prohibits mobile exchange services, such as vans or outreach teams conducting syringe exchanges outside of a fixed facility. It will not authorize safe or supervised injection sites. The operation of safe or supervised injection sites within the city is expressly forbidden by this ordinance. It will not allow unregulated operations. The SSPs cannot operate without meeting both state certification requirements and the city's licensing and operational rules. It will not permit operations near sensitive areas. It maintains strict distances from schools, daycares, parks, playgrounds, libraries, and residential properties, preventing the SSPs from locating, being located too close to these areas. It will not allow unlimited syringe distribution. The one-to-one exchange requirement prevents the distribution of more needles than are returned in a single visit. It will not grant broad immunity. While lawful participation is permitted, SSP protects individuals from prosecution for possessing or distributing syringes within the program's parameters. It does not provide immunity for possessing illicit substances or for syringe possession distribution outside of the authorized program. It does not permit services to minors. The ordinance prohibits SSPs from knowingly distributing syringes or supplies to individuals under 18 years of age. It will not allow charging of, charging for services. SSPs will not be permitted to charge participants for receiving SSP services. And lastly, it will not compromise participant privacy in city reports. While requiring data reporting, the ordinance mandates that no personal, personally identifiable information of SSP participants be included in reports to the city, except as required by law for specific public health emergencies. So those are the things that this ordinance will do and what it won't do. So moving forward, obviously, we're here tonight to present this. This is a, a very rough framework. It's an amalgamation of other cities, other towns, in talking with city staff and, and coming up with something that we can have as a starting point. A copy of this draft has been sent to the city attorney for legal review. The city attorney is obviously waiting on further feedback and information that the council may have that may want to add to or take away from this ordinance, but they are reviewing it and will continue to do so. Looking forward to council feedback and recommendations that the staff can then take, incorporate into or omit from the, the current draft model, and then bring that to additional workshops and public hearings. So, again, I appreciate your time. I didn't wanna read through the entire draft ordinance. I believe that you guys have all had a copy of it. I thank you for your time. I look forward to hearing your comments, questions, and suggestions.
Thank you, Director Connor. Appreciate you bringing this forward. Needle waste is certainly a concern in our city, and we, as you mentioned earlier, need to balance harm reduction with the needs of our business community and residents. We will also, you know, you mentioned timeline, which is still being hashed out, but I believe at the next city council meeting, Administrator, we should be having feedback from needle exchange programs. My hope is a member of the recovery community and somebody from the Maine CDC. Is that, that's currently the planned Administrator, King Raff?
Correct, yes.
Okay, excellent. And, yes, comments and feedback from, from councilors now. Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. Great job, Director Connor. As I have looked through it, I asked for it while I was on vacation. You gave it to me. I have to do a few questions, and as with the last presentation, I'm just gonna email it all to the council, and then we can get something to you, get something back to us. So we just don't spend a lot of time trying to get answers tonight. The only blaring thing for me is, it's gonna be Lewiston only. I know it's difficult to control that, but in the past, the other towns were allowed to come in who had their own organizations that were maybe married to or the same as, and would get three, 400 needles at a time. Are we gonna be able to somehow prevent that from happening based on state rules and regulations? I couldn't see where it says we can't, but that's a concern that I have that, you know, and I'll use my previous town, Rumford, as an example. They would come and get 500 needles at a time. You know, they'd say, I'm from Rumford, I want 500 needles, and I'm helping people down there, and they weren't bringing exchanges, obviously. So I would like that at least to be looked at, and a couple other minor things that I'll forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Herman?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Connor. I think that, I think this ordinance is a, has a good framework here. I, I know I sent some concerns to you in email. I did wanna mention, in your intro, you started out talking about needle litter, but then this ordinance doesn't address litter. It's just, it's a regulation on syringe service programs. So I just wanted to just separate those two items, because they, they really are separate issues. And as far as, like, you know, needles not, not being counted, the, the typical way that someone at home disposes of needles is to put them in a hard plastic container, tape it up, and put it in the trash. So none of those needles are, are gonna get counted ever, as far as, as if you're comparing how many needles go out and how many come back in. I did wanna get into, so my, I had a few concerns about the, the ordinance. My biggest concern was the way that it's restricted to certain zones, and then the, the buffers around other uses. It really, it basically means there's nowhere you can put a, a syringe service program if those are kept at the same levels. Because if you combine the zoning districts and then the buffers, the buffers erase most of those two zoning districts, and you just don't have anywhere you can put it. I also had, I had a concern about the, the permit fee. I don't know if that, it seems high to me, $550 a year. I don't know if it is. I, I just suggested checking with the providers to see, especially because they're, if they're not charging people for the service, you know, their, their revenue isn't gonna be, isn't gonna be really high. And then I had a few other things. I guess the, the only other thing that I would, I would stress is that I feel like it's the city's role to regulate where these, where these facilities go and how they impact the rest of the city, and how they mitigate any negative effects. As far as getting into the details of how they, like, the clinical details of how they run the program, as far as how many, you know, how many syringes a person can have, and how many, you know, how many they have to bring back, I feel like that's not really the city's role, because we don't have that, that kind of clinical expertise to, to regulate that sort of thing. But those are my main things. I'll, I think maybe I'll email the whole council this now that, now that we're talking about it as a group. But overall, I think it's, I think it's got a good framework, and I look forward to further conversations about it.
Thank you. If you'd like, I have a compilation of all of your, your comments and suggestions. I can put that back out to the entire council.
Sure.
And the city administration as well.
Thank you. Counselor Najin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the efforts in the first draft here. I just wanna go over a few points that kinda came up that, I'm not quite sure how we even include them in some of the ordinance pieces, but one of the, one of the pieces, with the two needle exchanges operating, you know, I think at the end of the day, we do run into a situation in our community where we have sometimes overlapping services, to the point where, you know, we're basically competing for clientele on, on a nonprofit level. But I'm not quite sure if, if the two services are really tied to, like, any need, right? So like, ultimately, I don't know if one service is enough to cover the entire community already, right? Or if three. And so, you know, it's one of those things that, that, since we don't have a lot of good data, it's hard to determine how many we would allow overall. I would say that when we see needle litter in the community, it indicates two things to me. One, people are using clean needles, and two, that we have access to drugs in our community, for sure. And so I, I think, you know, focusing on picking up the needles is a separate issue than, than the needle exchange overall. But I do agree that the one-for-one does support people bringing needles back, so that there is that. I think that makes sense. I also have two concerns I just wanna voice. One, there is a privacy concern for the, for the client who is using a service such as this. So ultimately, where they're located and how they interact with the community, if you're standing in a line in front of a needle exchange on, you know, let's say, the most-traveled road in, in the entire city, 30,000 cars a day, there's a good chance that somebody's gonna see you. And so I think, you know, there's a concern over client confidentiality and where we're locating these organizations. You know, they're, they, they should be more clinical or therapeutic. It's kinda like when you go to the maxiofacial surgeon, you never, like, get your wisdom teeth pulled out and then walk back through the, the waiting room, right? There's a, there's a separate end exit, and there's reasons for that, right? And part of it is, is privacy. Also, these are essential services. Also, these are essential services, and so I didn't see anything in here about hours or times that these folks are going to have to be open. I think it's inconsistent to say that we have an organization that operates in our community that provides an essential service that is not open. I think that's, that there's a big challenge with that. And so, you know, the, I believe there are maybe hours, but nothing about the consistency of the hours. You know, at the end of the day, if you are going to pick up needles and the organization is closed, what then? You know, and so that comes back to our business licensing piece as well, I think. So I just wanted to name those, those pieces because those are our concerns and mine. But I think it's a good start, for sure. It's something to work from, and I think it was well thought out, and I'm looking forward to comments from the public in general, as well as some of the experts in the field in order to give feedback as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Sewell.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. This has been a long time coming, and I'm very excited that we finally get to go through and do this. It's definitely needed. I would like to see only one license in the city, and I don't know if or how we could do it, but the perimeter around the establishment, if there's a way, because right now, you see folks coming out, and they usually don't get very far, and they just use the needles that they have just been given. And I don't, I don't want that to continue to happen. So I don't know if there's a way we can put a perimeter around their establishment where there's no use, or I don't know how to do that, but I think that will help with a lot of the, the public use, hopefully, maybe. And other than that, I think, my other question was residential, commercial buildings that have residents upstairs, commercial downstairs. How does that work?
I have the planners looking into that when I receive that question from you, and they're still working on that.
Okay.
We'll be coming back with more answers.
All right. I think that's it for now. Great job. I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director. This is a great first step. I think this is going to be a long journey, and I would caution the council against jumping to any conclusions or making specific recommendations on this menu of options until we've heard from subject matter experts, which I understand will happen at our next workshop. We will be hearing, I hope, from providers and from members of the main CDC. The needle litter problem, to my understanding, really burgeoning when the CDC relaxed, or not actually the CDC, but the governor relaxed the one-for-one exchange limitations initially imposed during COVID. This whole program was set up as a harm mitigation to avoid transmission of particularly HIV and hepatitis C. I'm learning a lot about diseases and drug use during my foray in investigation into this. I'm very concerned that local ordinances not run counter to the stated and avowed goals of harm reduction. So I caution the council against jumping into specifics on this ordinance until we've had a chance to learn from the experts, which, as I said, I hope will happen at our next meeting two weeks hence. Other than that, it's an excellent start, a good framework. It gives us a lot of things to think about. The one thing that I did not see in this ordinance is the Portland approach, which was redemption, cash for needles coming in. According to the public health director in Portland, that, again, is a new program, only implemented in November of last year. According to the public health director down there, this is, it is a successful program. So that's another option. There are a couple other options that have been discussed. One is identification of syringes with some kind of color coding to identify whether they came from CVS, or Hannaford, or Shaw's, or COSI, or Spurwink, or from out of town. I'm not sure of the efficacy of that, but it's worthy of consideration, I think. It might help us identify sources if we run across untold numbers of needles in public places where they shouldn't be. So congratulations. I appreciate the work that you put into this, Director. As I said, it's a great first step, but I caution against jumping onto this too rapidly until we've educated ourselves through the good offices of the folks who know more about it than certainly I do. Thank you.
And we should be getting any, any day now, the new annual report. It should come out by the end of May for 2024, so we'll have more data to work with.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Connor, for putting this together. A couple of points that I'd like to make. I like the, the idea to give out harm reduction items with this. That is very important, right? Education is key for a lot of things. Love that. Scaling back to one-on-one, supports one agency, I think. That would be my suggestion here. This will address the needles on the street, too, over time. I think if you're only giving one instead of five hundred, hundreds, I think over time you're going to see the reduction on the streets, and I think that's very important, too. So this is a great first step, like everybody's saying. I did let you know some of my thoughts that do incorporate some things into here, which I think would be very beneficial in some ways for revenue and stuff like that to deal with some of these things. So appreciate that. Thank you for that.
If I may, I just wanted to make one comment. On one of your suggestions, it's, it's actually contrary to state law.
Okay.
For, for the supervised, that hasn't been, that hasn't been enacted. So you can't do that.
It's worth, worth a try.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Further comments from the council or questions? Yes, Counselor Longchamp.
Yes, I would just like to say that I really like all the effort and work that you put into the ordinance. I think it's long overdue. I think it's super important. I would like to see one organization rather than having two providers. I also like the idea of having, you know, the organization in a building perhaps by itself. I don't think apartments should be above or around it. I like where the methadone clinic is, and people get out there just fine, whether they walk or take the bus or get a ride. So I think somewhere out in an area like that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Najin.
I just wanted to make one point in which we rely heavily on outside services for, for things like this. In our community, in Portland, for instance, Portland actually runs the needle exchange. And so I think they have a lot more flexibility in the ways in which they respond to their needs because they're providing the service. And so.
One of them. There's two.
There are two. Okay.
Portland, the city runs one, and there is an organization that runs another one.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, it's always a challenge when we don't have, like, for instance, in this ordinance, there are proactive things outlined for the possibility of changes in future law. And so I think it's, it's well thought out, and after we get the feedback, hopefully we can get something on the books.
Counselor Galant.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I keep hearing one, and I don't disagree with that, but the state has already authorized two in our county, so we'd be competing against that. I don't know that we can change the rules based on that. Just if you go to the website, which I have all of surrounding counties, and most of them say call ahead for hours, they're not posted. So I just assume that most of these people who are on drugs have phones and can call ahead and figure out when they can exchange their needles, just food for thought.
Yes, Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to point out that we here locally have a resource, and I'm not certain that it's been consulted with. I would like to have the council charge the public health committee with submitting recommendations to the council pertaining specifically to the menu of options that Director Connor has presented to us, but also any other topics, ideas, and suggestions the public health committee may have in regulating needle litter specifically and addressing the public health issues and surrounding exchange programs in general. So I'm not sure how we formally do that in a workshop session, but I would like to have the council direct the public health committee, which is created as an advisor to this council with a specific task of recommending or submitting to us recommendations concerning this problem.
Yes, no, that's a great idea, Counselor Chidham. Can members of the council please remind me who is the liaison? Counselor Longchamp, is that you?
Yes, but I do think we've gotten some emails that, in fact, are saying that they are putting something together to present. I'm sure you, did we all get that email?
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah, I saw that. Did, what?
Well, Counselor Longchamp, I get, or sorry, please continue that I have something.
So basically, I'm saying that the public health committee is already putting something together to present to us.
On?
The needle exchange, obviously.
They are?
Right.
Okay. All right, well, excellent. We will wait to hear from them. Okay, we're coming up on time. Anything further, Director Connor?
No, I appreciate all the feedback. We'll take this along with what you guys have already given. We'll compile it all, and then I'll send it back out to everybody so that we can get some sort of starting point for the next workshop.
Counselor Chidham.
Do you have a scheduled recommended deadline? I mean, you want to have amendments to this suggested ordinance in time for our next council meeting, which would give us seven, eight days, I think, to put that together, given the deadlines for agenda publication.
So my understanding is you're having another workshop with the, with the, the subject matter experts.
Right.
And I'm assuming they're going to have information for you that you're going to weigh in on, and, and I would prefer to take all of this, send it back out to you as one long document with all of the suggested changes, and then wait for after that second workshop from, from the data or the information that comes from, from the providers, and then, and take all of that and put it together into something that can be brought forth for a public hearing, if that pleases the council.
To my initial point, I would hope that the council would wait to get subject matter expert input before making these. We would be rehashing this at least twice instead of once, and if we, if we enter into a review of the draft with as much information as we can have, I think it would be better than trying to get information to you now to bring back to us, which may be altered by information we pick out from the subject matter experts and then back again. So I would suggest that we prepare to have an ordinance for deliberation as an agenda item after the public, the subject matter experts have spoken to us at our next, next workshop.
Okay, I can, I can have that ready.
Does that work for council?
Yeah, I think at the next meeting, we'll have a workshop, and then we'll, we'll take it from there. Yeah.
Yeah, so a month from now, we'll have the first, the first reading would be the way it would be.
Yeah, potentially, yes. Okay, thank you, councilors. Thank you, Director Connor. I appreciate your service to our city.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. We are going to take a very quick break, reset the staging lights here, and then be back for our seven o'clock meeting. Thank you.
But, you know, they say the kids don't cross that road. Well, when you're young, how many of us remember being young? You're immortal. Cars aren't a risk. Nothing phases you. So, yes, the kids do cross that road. Thank you for your time.
Charles Arthur Soule, 42 Bradley Street, Lewiston, Maine. I attended the school budget vote and pretty much hung out there for a while. And a reporter walks up to me because he knew me and says, "Chuck, why is Lewiston having their election in May and not June after they've had it in June for over 15 years?" And I says, "Disenfranchising some voters. The information doesn't get out." And matter of fact, I only knew there was an election a couple of days before the election.
Matt Roy, Ward Three. During the workshop tonight, numerous counselors mentioned sending emails to each other. So apparently you've all forgotten your FOWAR training from last year. Because if it doesn't go against the actual letter of the law, goes against the spirit of the law as the Assistant Attorney General, who happens to be a resident of Ingersgoggin County, told you all at the beginning of last year. And on the issue of the school budget, this has been, the referendum process has been around for nearly 20 years. It's always been, well, at least for 12, 15 years, it's always been in May. Of course, a former superintendent would have said, and probably few members of the school committee back then would have said, "If it fails," you know, the whole issue about it failing, and we won't have our budget come July 1st. But as I pointed out, when it failed in 2016, state law actually creates contingencies. Thank you.
My name is John Smotherman. I live on Thorn Avenue in Lewiston. And the issue I have is our city ordinances aren't being followed by everybody. I have a 54,000 10-wheel truck that backs up the street full blast. I know this because I've had a Class A license since 1986. And I can recognize what this vehicle is doing. It's a hazard. And it's not supposed to be in that residential area because he can't get to Thorn Avenue without going on Wantello, which is restricted to 195. He's 54,000. I can't seem to get anybody to respond. His exhaust pipe is about 15 feet from my bedroom window. And he starts it at 5:00. I get to listen to the air bill before he can drive away. And my complaints fall on deaf ears. He's allowed to violate the ordinance for weight restriction every day, twice a day. And I'd like a remedy on that. Any advice?
Director Roy, do I have business cards there? Yes, perfect. If you can email me, I will connect to you with the appropriate city department.
Okay, I can send you some videos, too. This kid's playing in that street, and you can only look in one mirror at a time. He's going to kill somebody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Deputy Administrator, I see we have a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we have the city administrator's report next.
Oh, yes, thank you. Our city administrator, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, we are continuing with the public meet and greets I've been holding. These will be billed as meet and greets or community conversations or town halls. We'll rotate kind of the format a bit. So our next session is going to be tentatively scheduled for June 10th, 5:00 to 6:30 at the Guyger School. And of course, all Lewiston residents and local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend to share their thoughts, views, complaints, ideas, or anything else they'd like to share with us. Please come. It'll be a great session and good community conversation. And again, we will be rotating these around the city to ensure that there is equal opportunity for all residents to participate. So I look forward to that. I want to talk about the Wiseman Bridge. The Wiseman Bridge is a historic 1927 bridge that goes over the canal on Chestnut Street. It's in relatively poor condition, at least aesthetically. Right now, there are some historic light globes that have been broken off for many years. The bridge has not been lit that whole time. There's graffiti, there's some other maintenance issues. So I recently met with our Public Works Director. I would like to get the globes replaced, the bridge relit, the graffiti removed, and some light refurbishment done with the idea of having a rededication ceremony for this bridge, another one of these small wins in our downtown revitalization and rebirth for the city of Lewiston. So looking forward to working with Public Works on this project. It's a great historic bridge in our downtown. I think it'll look amazing with the light globes relit for the first time in what I've been told is maybe decades. So again, a small project, but a small win for the city of Lewiston and I think a great piece of our downtown revitalization. So I look forward to that. I also want to talk about Kennedy Park. Some of the behaviors that happen on a daily basis at Kennedy Park leave this park to be not an inviting place for all. And I want to underline all residents of Lewiston and visitors to come and enjoy. So I recently met with our police leadership to talk about strategies of how we can improve the conditions in this public park. So expect to see more foot patrols. We're going to be talking about some other things and taking a much more proactive stance here at City Hall to make sure this park is the crown jewel of our city park system and is an inviting, welcoming, and safe place, again, for all residents and visitors of Lewiston to be. So again, expect some work happening there. We might do some signage outlining some park rules, and there will be just some increased focus on the maintenance and controlling some of the behaviors in this park. So again, look for some work to be happening there. I also want to talk about graffiti. I talked about this one at Public Works Department also. We have a number of areas with a heavy amount of graffiti around the city. I want to thank the department for, we had this conversation, and it was within a couple of days, the Peace Bridge going over the Ingersgoggin from Auburn was largely cleaned of graffiti tags. It was particularly bothersome to me because it says, "Welcome to Lewiston." And then you see graffiti tags all across this bridge heading into our city. So the optics matter. Optics matter. So we're going to be doing a lot more with graffiti cleanup and just being proactive on this. I want to tell the public, if you see graffiti tags, please send them in. You can send them to Director to me, you can send them to our Public Works Department. It is going to take a whole community effort to get a handle on this. And it is a recurring battle, but we cannot give up. We have to keep up the fight. So again, it may seem like a small issue to a lot of people, but graffiti is aesthetically a problem for cities. When we talk about rebirth and revitalization, this is not in keeping with that vision. So we're going to be proactive by cleaning graffiti. It started with the bridge this past week. We're going to be doing a lot more. There's actually graffiti on this building, on the alley that I pointed out this past week we're going to be taking care of. So please, any reports of graffiti, send them in. We're going to get a handle on this. I do want to thank our city clerk and our election workers just for a very smooth school budget election last week. They hand counted the ballots twice on this. So thank you to the city clerk, the city clerk's staff, and all election workers for your hard work here. We always appreciate it. Just a quick update, employee updates and milestones. I do want to recognize Cindy Duboy in our Finance Department has been named our Employee of the Month this month. Cindy's contributions to our Finance Department are many. We appreciate her service to the city. So thank you, Cindy. Congrats on being Employee of the Month. Lastly, I just want to talk a little bit about, so downtown events and programming. We have a number of community partners as well as city departments that are involved on this. But we're always looking to grow the vibrancy of our downtown. We're always looking to grow the experience that visitors have to our downtown. And so we're going to be brainstorming ideas. We're going to be looking at new things to bring into downtown, again, as part of our revitalization and rebirth. And so with that, I'm going to invite up Joe Grochmal, who's our Special Assistant in our office. He has worked previously on a concept, and this is a concept we're presenting tonight. Just some ideas, concepts. It'll take it from there. But he has worked on a busking festival in another community and has some ideas on this we want to share. And this may be a concept we bring forward, might not be for this year, but for next year in our downtown to, again, liven up the scene down there. So I'm going to invite Joe up. He has a very short presentation to share with you. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Brian, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public as well. As Brian mentioned, my name is Joe Grochmal. I recently started in the Administration Office, well, it feels like a while ago in a good way, but it's only been about three and a half weeks and loving every second of it. It's my hope that in the months ahead, I'm going to often find myself in this seat, providing updates on either new or advancing initiatives in the Office of Administration and our partner departments. And I figure, you know, you're really only able to make a first impression once with a presentation. And so I'm so excited to be here today to talk about a subject that's near and dear to my heart, which sits at the nexus of people, public performance, performers, and policy, and that's busking. So what I'm going to present today is a little background. So first and foremost, what is busking? Well, busking really boils down to street performance. It's the idea that people can use a public venue, a park, a street, a corner, a place like that, to serve as their stage. And these types of performances tend to be fairly spontaneous. They don't have a large production value, generally, as you might imagine. And they're meant really for the enjoyment of passersby. It's not a show that, you know, you charge a lot of money for. You know, it's just people can pass by, they can engage with it as they will, and then they can take in as they will. Around that also, buskers rely on voluntary donations then from members of the public who enjoy their performance. So if, you know, someone's really captivated with a particular act, they're able to leave a tip. Some larger venues will have a, you know, they'll provide a small stipend or small payment to performers to incentivize them to participate. As you might imagine, with a space like, you know, a public square, it brings in a lot of diverse talent, a lot of people with really unique skill sets. And I'll get into this more in a minute, but you'd be amazed by the kinds of talents that people have, that they're able to bring out and show in this space. My guess is in this room, we have a number of people with unique talents that, you know, they would be able to showcase in such a setting. Around this also, there's the idea of a flexible schedule, again, spontaneous performance. You know, buskers have the opportunity to choose their own schedules, locations where they'd like to perform, how they'd like to perform, how they sort of change up these acts over time. Basically, at the end of the day, and the bottom line there is, busking is a vibrant and dynamic form of public performance. It brings art and entertainment to the streets, and it feeds on the energy, the generosity, and the appreciation of its audience. So I'd like to take everyone back to my hometown. So this is a small town in western Massachusetts called Great Barrington. And specifically, you're looking at Railroad Street. So Railroad Street has a long and storied history in Great Barrington. Back in the 50s, it was actually the red light district of the town. Then they started to clean things up a little bit. And this image here actually catches it at a bit of a low point. This is early during the pandemic, not a lot of people out on the streets. Again, there was traffic parked, a lot of that was virtual work on the second and third stories of the buildings on the left and right. But the street was in trouble. And this was especially true if you look down at the first level there for a number of the retailers along the way there. Flash forward two years, this is what you have. You have a street packed with people, with a performer. This gentleman was from Australia. It's a little hard to tell from the back, but he's actually fitting himself through a tennis racket at this particular moment, which is remarkable to see. So you might be asking yourself, well, how did we get from a relatively empty street to this? Well, the answer was Berkshire Busk. I had the privilege of working with Berkshire Busk from its inception. I actually met the gentleman Eugene Carr, who launched this festival, just as he was starting to think about it and come up with the concept. And basically, his idea was that we could use Railroad Street and parts of Main Street in Great Barrington. We could activate them, we could create spaces for performers, and then in turn, we could create a way for the public to engage with these performances. They didn't charge for people to access these venues. We ended up growing each year that I worked on this. I was with them for four summers. We ended up expanding from, you know, 12 or 13 different local acts to drawing talent from all around the world, which was pretty remarkable. I'm going to get into some metrics in a moment, but these are just a few shots of how that developed over time. So the festival itself ran for 10 weekends. It was on Fridays and Saturdays this past year from June 28th until August 31st, again, located in Main Street and Railroad Street. They estimate that about 25,000 attendees participated in the festival over 10 weekends, with about 50% of those coming exclusively for busk. In terms of social impacts, they conducted a survey where they polled several hundred members of this audience. They found that about 97% stated that the festival improved their perception of Great Barrington. They found that 84% of these attendees would give busk a perfect score of five out of five, and that 40% of the attendees were from outside of Massachusetts, which, again, for rural western Massachusetts where, you know, unless you're going there for a very specific reason, there isn't necessarily a drop. That was a pretty remarkable figure for us. Getting down to the dollars and cents of it, we found that 88% of attendees planned to dine, shop, or do both during their time in downtown Great Barrington, and that the average shopper who we interviewed, or person who was going to dine and/or shop, they were going to spend $91 on that trip. We ended up calculating that for every $1 that was invested in Berkshire Busk, we were able to return $10 in local economic activity. And that's, of course, on top of the cultural benefit. So Great Barrington, again, was a small town, and you might be asking yourself, well, could a model like this translate for a larger community? Well, we're going to go north here to Halifax, where they've had a festival for the past 30 years. They launched it, I believe, back in 1986. And so they have this annual festival each in July and August on the Halifax and Dartmouth Waterfronts. They draw 20,000-plus unique visitors. So again, individuals who are coming there exclusively for that event over six days in the summer. And this, again, they're funded by about $60,000 a year from city and cultural orgs. And so they ended up driving approximately $2.7 million in economic activity that could be directly linked to the festival. 45% of those attendees, again, similar numbers to Great Barrington, were non-local as well. So they were also drawing tourists to the area and in turn, generating repeat visits year over year. It's a free outdoor show. Again, the people you see there, they can engage with the performance as they see fit. And it provided a great opportunity for exposure for local artists as well, from Nova Scotia or Canadian. The artists, again, earn tips. I believe in the case of the Halifax Busker Festival, they also receive a stipend. I know for a fact that in Great Barrington, we paid stipends to all of our performers. And they can also gain visibility via social media as well. So as we're thinking about this now in the context of Lewiston, right? What are some of the benefits for us to explore a festival like this? Well, one point to bring up, of course, is that it offers opportunities for intercultural exchanges. I can speak from experience in my time in Great Barrington with some of the performers we brought in. We had, you know, we had everything from samba bands to acrobats, to gymnasts. It was truly remarkable. And you end up getting this really interesting and diverse flavor of different acts. The other cool thing, too, is as you're developing programming like this, you can also sort of change up the mix, so to speak, over time, depending on what's resonating with your audience and what isn't. The programming that we were running on day one of Berkshire Busk is not necessarily the same as the programming we're running today. And that just comes through the process of refining, you know, sort of which acts are resonating and what people want to see. You can also promote local talent. Again, as I mentioned previously, you know, you can bring in acts from outside, but there's also a lot of talent locally. And if there was a lot of talent in Great Barrington, a town of 7,800 people, I would imagine there is even more talent here in Lewiston, with all due respect to Great Barrington. It also serves as a way to attract visitors and, again, generate repeat visits over time as people become more familiar with the festival, but also businesses in the downtown and in areas that we could engage with. We can activate our public spaces. So there are studies, and I have all of this cited at the very end of the presentation, but there are studies that show that when you have events in public spaces, you actually increase democratization scores within communities because it encourages people to come together and share common space. This is especially important in the post-COVID world, where data shows that individuals are less likely to go out of their home and engage with each other in public spaces than they were pre-pandemic. And so creating opportunities for people to do that, especially around something as productive as the arts, could be a great opportunity. And then finally, it also allows for us to support what is already a strong arts community here. We have a lot of robust community partners who are interested in working with, over time, interested members of the community. Already in my limited time with the city, I can see, you know, that we're very engaged with special events and creating, you know, incredible opportunities for citizens to come out and engage with the city, its parks and community. And simply put, I want to continue to build on that. I think that would be pretty remarkable. And so just in general, you know, I'm not coming before you today with a specific plan for exactly what this would look like. But more so, this is just to set the tone for what we're looking into in the weeks and months ahead. Again, while I don't have a concrete plan in front of me today, what I can assure everyone of is that we're very eager to get going on this. We're eager to drive this forward. We're eager to build out exciting, dynamic programming for our community. And we're very, very interested, above all else, in having as many voices as possible involved in this mix so we can get that right, so we can deliver programming and opportunities that really hit the mark for what this community is looking for and what will bring us all together. So in any case, I'd like to thank you for your time. Feel free to, I'd be happy, I guess, to take any questions that you might have at this time. I'm also happy to take follow-up questions as well, you know, via email, over the phone. I'm always accessible. And finally, my sources. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Joe. This looks pretty awesome. Let's see if we can whip this up for July. Yeah. Yeah, we can take a few minutes for questions or comments if counselors have them. Counselor Nagin.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate your enthusiasm. And I think that you've kind of hit the nail on the head. I can think, you know, just, you know, photos with Krampus, you know, bring all kinds of people downtown. And so I lived in Burlington for a while, and State Street is one of the, you know, destinations for busking in northern New England. And it certainly does bring people out. It's something different that nobody else is doing, and it's basically a pretty low barrier to get started. So I think, yeah, it's nice outside of the box thinking. This is something I'm looking forward to seeing develop, as well as other ideas like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Longchamp.
Yes, I just want to say thank you. I'm very excited, and I do hope we can get it done, get it going sooner than later.
Certainly. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Soule.
So this is the first time I've heard busking, and it sounds pretty cool. I'm just really excited for all these new things that I see coming down the line. It's really exciting. So this is something that's, over a period of time, this isn't just so, you know, July 7th, we have a fair. It's like over however many days you choose?
Yep. So what we're envisioning right now is doing this as a series, so either weekly or biweekly, depending on what events are happening, so we can maximize the number of opportunities that we're presenting. But in the case of Berkshire Busk, the festival that I was working on, it was over the course of 10 weeks. So we would be out there on Friday and Saturday nights. In my last year doing it, I actually ran our operations team. So, you know, we would set it up, we'd get everything in order, you know, on Friday, you know, break it down, get it set back up again on Saturday. And we found over time that our numbers were pretty consistent between Friday and Saturday. Fridays were a little bit more popular than Saturdays. But again, our hope is that we can offer, you know, programming week over week with new acts, of course, and new opportunities, so it doesn't get stale. But that's our hope.
Well, well done. I'm very excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator Kane Rand.
That concludes our report. Thank you.
Okay. And yes, thank you for that. Now, Deputy Administrator, I believe we have a consent agenda.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We do have a consent agenda this evening.
One second. Yes, Counselor Nagin, did you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to remove Agenda Item Number Three from the consent agenda to vote on individually.
We will pull that out. What's left, Deputy Administrator?
That would be Items One, Two, Four, and Five.
Do you mind reading them for the record?
Number one would be the appointment to the Voter Registration of Appeals Board. Number two is the appointment of a member to the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee. Number four is a policy manual amendment to eliminate the regulation of taxicab rates. And number five is the amendments to the city business license fee schedule policy regarding the fee for taxicab companies.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam.
Second.
Second by Counselor Nagin. Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Counselor for Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Yes.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven, nothing.
Thank you. We are now starting with Item Number Three.
Yes, Item Number Three, Mr. Mayor. Appointment to the Lewiston Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Requested action to confirm the May's nomination to appoint the following residents as members of the Board of Commissioners of the Lewiston Housing Authority. That would be Jody Jalbert of Central Avenue here in Lewiston. She would be the Citizen Representative. Her term would expire September 17th, 2025. And Cheryl Keaton of Blake Street, Tenant Representative, and her term would expire October 7th, 2028.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam, second by Counselor Glant. Discussion. Yes, Counselor Nagin.
So I originally was going to put forward a motion to table this until a date's certain that we could have a conversation with LHA concerning some of the development pieces that are happening in the community, as well as the delay on Martell School. I was since informed that one of the reasons that LHA is not present today is because they sent an email yesterday. That doesn't change my position or the fact that I strongly encourage you, sir, to appoint a member of the City Council to the Board of Lewiston Housing Authority. The relationship, I feel, could be greatly improved by having somebody who sits on this board, on this dais here, sitting on that board, so that when we have discussions as policymakers, we're involving one of the largest developers in our community and the only one that is targeted at handling both affordable housing and the vast majority of housing vouchers in the region. And so they cannot function without your appointments, and we cannot function without clear dialogue with this organization and the ability to have a trusting relationship, which at times, you know, if I send an email and don't get a response for 14 days, that's a problem. When I contact LHA for a constituent concern, or I have an individual in my community who is providing LHA housing, who is receiving late payments, like, these are all things that affect our working relationship with an organization that is not always present in the conversations that we need them to be in. And so again, I don't necessarily have any direct opposition to these two individuals, the Citizen Representative and the Tenant Representative, but I strongly encourage you to appoint somebody from the council to represent the city interests in LHA's board.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with Counselor Nagin on that. I think that is very, very important for somebody to sit on the board, a counselor to sit on that board.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counselor Nagin and Counselor Roy. However, I wonder whether the charter bylaws enabling statute specifically limits the number of directors on the LHA Board. If so, is it possible to have a non-voting representative from the council sit at these meetings on a regular basis?
It's my understanding, and maybe Deputy Administrator O'Malley, you can help me out here, it's my understanding these meetings are open to the public, and any member of the public, including a member of the council, is free to attend.
They are open to the public, Mr. Mayor. I am not familiar with the makeup, and I do know there are certain requirements for who you appoint.
Right, yes. Counselor Glant, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I agree with Counselor Nagin, Roy, and Counselor Chittam as we go around the table. I do agree with Counselor Chittam, the idea that we could have an at-large person assigned from here. I understand the public can go, but when you say the public, then you don't always get somebody there. So if a member of the council would like to do that, and we could have an at-large, non-voting, which we have plenty of committees where counselors are there and they don't vote, they basically represent the council, so they can have some input and some say and bring back things. I think that'd be very beneficial for us as we move forward with our projects.
Counselor Nagy, yes?
I would just like to point out, one, all of us are citizen representatives, and two, the challenge that I have with not tabling this is that what other way do we have in order to engage a conversation with LHA that creates a pinch point to actually make something come out of this, so that we have some type of relationship that we're building together, right? We're depending on LHA to do a lot of things in our community. They have a lot of responsibilities in the community. We're the policymakers, and we should have a better relationship. And so, if we do vote on this today, and then they get their two members for the next five years, do we not see them unless they're coming to us in executive session to talk about a development project? That's my concern. And so, I'm not completely convinced I'm not going to try to table it, but I just want to put that forward.
Understood. I'll speak to that in a second. Yes, Counselor Roy, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think having a seat at the table is very important. Anybody can go to these meetings, but having a seat at the table is very important. That's my point on this.
Yes, Counselor Longchamp.
I, too, would just agree. I would agree that we should have one of the counselors sitting at that table. Thank you.
Yeah, at this point, you know, the Counselor Chittam's, Counselor Chittam, did you want to weigh in again?
Well, I wanted to reiterate that this may be beyond our control, which lends me to support potential motion to table. If we find that the composition of this Board is limited by statute, or Charter, or ordinance, and we have an opportunity now for us to pass that up, thank you, Counselor Nagy, for bringing that up. If we pass up on it, then we've got, until the next vacancy occurs, before we can take any substantive action.
So, a few things here. Yeah, I guess we could have a conversation with LHA and perhaps the city attorney about what makes sense and what is allowable to have a seat at the Board. And if we're talking about a non-voting member, I mean, that is, you know, practically speaking, that is showing up, and as a member of the public, you know, you can show up as a non-voting member. I would also like to, I understand that, you know, you have concerns, Counselor Nagy, about, you know, I guess, timeliness of feedback from LHA. I can't speak to that, but, or to your experiences, but every time I've reached out to the director, he's been forthcoming. And I would also like to say, they've been here numerous times, explaining both in executive session, but in a workshop setting and for agenda items. And then there is ultimately oversight, because LHA's projects need zoning approval. They sometimes need TIFs. And so, I would argue that we have plenty of oversight over LHA. And I, you know, without, you know, taking a very, like, close look at the bylaws and Charter for, you know, organizational documents for LHA, I, you know, they are quasi-government for a reason. And I guess I don't want to have undue influence over them. Those are just my thoughts for now. But at this point, we will go to a public comment for this agenda item.
Again, Matt Roy, Ward Three. Well, this is not an issue of the city Charter, city ordinances. Main Housing, like all other municipal housing authorities in the state of Maine, are created by act of the legislature. There are seven commissioners, in our case, and probably most cases for these municipal housing authorities. The mayor gets to appoint with advice and consent from the council. And again, as Counselor Nagy has pointed out on several times, and as I have pointed out on several times, Lewiston Housing, the leadership, senior management of Lewiston Housing Authority only comes here when they want something. It's a one-way street, and it's upped, and that street is a one-way cul-de-sac up to their office, not the reverse. So if the council, so Counselor Nagy is correct, having a counselor who, by definition, fits, is a citizen, you know, by all laws of the state of Maine, city charter, city ordinances, there is no, I'm not an attorney, but there, the, there's a pre-merger case where a city counselor does not fit the definition of a citizen representative. Of course, we're just going to be back here in September, based on what the deputy city administrator mentioned, all right, since one of these vacancies is going to have to be appointed again this September. Thank you.
Matthew Egren, Ward Four. There is a great difference between sitting there as an observer member of a Board and being actually on the Board. It's much like being an observer out here versus a counselor. You guys can sit there and talk, offer opinions. We get a brief period where we can speak our mind, and whether or not what we say matters to what you guys choose to vote on, it doesn't have to. If we're sitting up there with you, or you're sitting up there on that diocese with you, the vote, the voice that I have has a total different point of view and meaning. That's why I agree with Counselor Nagy that the council needs a seat, and a voting seat, not a observer seat, not a non-voting citizen one. Because there's a great difference between attending the meeting and being part of the meeting. Thank you for your time.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Yes, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. Noting that the one will expire in September, which is a little over 90 days, I don't know that we couldn't approve this tonight and give us some time to research the proper way for us to be able to sit this. I'd hate to go two weeks to our next meeting and then determine that we need more time. If this is going to be pushed out to '27, '28, I would see the urgency, but I think with a 90-day delay, in a sense, let the person be appointed, and then we can turn around at that point. If we can, we can, or maybe we have to reappoint the same person. But I think it's due diligence, just give us 90 days and let somebody research it for us.
Thank you, Counselor Glant. I support that. I would love to see these two put in place tonight. Yes, Counselor Herrmann.
Thank you. Just to tag on to that, I don't know exactly how many people are on the Board, and if they have any trouble reaching quorum, but, you know, if we're currently filling two vacancies, then they're already down two, and then I know some organizations' boards sometimes have trouble meeting quorum, and then they can meet, but they can't take any action. So not knowing the specific details, I don't know if we would be putting them in that sort of position, but with two vacancies now, I feel like we probably should fill them, and then, as Counselor Glant suggested, we'll be able to revisit this fairly soon.
Counselor Nagy.
This question is for administration. For the position that opens up in September, do we know what that representative looks like? What, each of these is required to be like, for instance, there's a citizen representative, a tenant representative, do we know what the September position will be?
Reading this information, Jody Jalbert is filling that position until September, and that's when the term would expire, and she would have to be reappointed.
Saying she is the citizen representative.
She is the citizen representative.
So, in that case, I absolutely concur. I believe that we're pretty much aligned in the fact that we want to see representation from council on this Board. So let's do the research to see if it's allowed by Charter and state law, and in September, we'll hopefully have some good recommendations for you, Mayor, for the appointment.
Thank you. Further comments before we go to vote? Deputy Administrator.
Counsel for Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven, zero.
Thank you. Item number, now we're jumping to six.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Public hearing on application for new liquor license for the Blue Feather LLC, 49 Lisbon Street. Requested action to authorize the city clerk to approve a new liquor license application for the Blue Feather LLC, 49 Lisbon Street.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Chittam, followed by Counselor Glant. Discussion. Yes, Counselor Nagy.
I'm just wondering, is Casey Peacock?
Can you use your?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is Casey Peacock here?
Yes.
Hi. Just want to say thank you for being willing to open a business downtown. We appreciate it.
Further comments? Public comments? Back to the council. Madam, Deputy?
I'm going to call the vote now, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Counsel for Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yeah, I did go to public comment.
He did go to public comment, and said, then nobody said anything, so he's good.
Right, yeah.
I took the time down, it was 7:58, so we're good.
Yes.
Counsel for Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven, zero.
Thank you very much. Item Number Seven.
Item Number Seven, public hearing on a renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for the Lewiston Recreation Department at 65 Central Avenue. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment for the Lewiston Recreation Department.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam.
Second.
Second by Counselor Nagy. Discussion. Yes, Counselor Chittam.
A quick question. I've never noticed this before, but why do we ask for dates of birth on these applications?
We want to make sure they're over 18, or they're an adult.
Can we say, are you over 18? I noticed that this application has not filled out the date of birth. The city of Lewiston is the owner, there's no date of birth for that.
That would be 1863.
1873, right. I want a specific date, Deputy Administrator. And I can understand why Director Welsh is reluctant to provide her date of birth.
I can say that we are, Counselor Chittam, I can say that staff is working on updating our application for special permits for a lot of different things, so we can bring that up as we kind of try to streamline those with our new special assistant that we all got to meet tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Counselor Nagy.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same. I appreciate the effort that's going into redeveloping these special event permits, you know, the whole idea of like, you know, are we going to allow dancing? You know, it sounds so footloose, but, yeah, thanks.
Public comment? Back to the council. Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Counsel for Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven, zero.
Item Number Eight.
Item Number Eight, public hearing in first passage for amendment to the zoning and land code, Article 12, performance standards regarding changes to allowances for some home occupations. Actually, Mr. Mayor, at a request of code and planning, they would like to hear, read Item 10, right to Item 8, if we can.
Right, yeah, strike that. We're going to 10 first. Thank you.
Okay, this will be a public hearing in first passage for amendment to the zoning and land use code, Article 5, administration enforcement to temporary onsite housing during construction for owner-occupied housing. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, zoning and land use code, Article 5, administration enforcement regarding temporary onsite housing during construction, receive first passage by roll call vote, and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor, did you have something else?
Well, there was already a motion on the floor, but I understand that there's a reshuffling of the schedule, so I will either move or second passage of the first reading of Item 10.
Yes. Counselor Herrmann, were you moving this?
Yes, Item 10.
Item 10, yes, exactly. And then, Counselor Chittam, are you still amenable to seconding that?
That's what I said, yes. There was a motion on the floor, so we violated Robert's rules on parliamentary procedure, but let's move forward. I will second Counselor Herrmann's motion to approve this on first reading.
Thank you. We will have Madam Clerk watch the tape and render a verdict. Yes, we're here with our Director of Planning Code and our City Planner. Please kick us off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, again, we brought in Deputy Director Norton. She is going to brief you guys on this amendment, or agenda item.
Good evening. This item looks at changing an existing portion of our ordinance where we allow temporary housing onsite. Currently, we allow it when a house has been damaged and its owner occupied, so people can live in an RV or other temporary housing onsite for a period of time, approved by code enforcement, and then there's an extension mechanism with a date certain time limit. The staff brought this to Planning Board to consider whether we could allow this for the construction of a new owner-occupied home or unit. And so, the Planning Board liked that idea. We made a few changes to the amount of time allowed for construction, to allow things to take a little longer, given that, you know, there's a lot of complications lately with finding contractors, prices being higher, and that sort of thing, and supply chain. So that's the primary reason for it, is to allow greater flexibility, so that people could live onsite while their home is being constructed, make changes to the amount of time you can stay onsite. There are some elements in here that aren't changing, like a limit of one per lot, so if you're building a, you know, two-family, you can't have two temporary trailers onsite at a time, and so forth. And then we also made a change, so that you don't have to hook up to existing septic sewer or water. There can be a waste management plan or water management plan if, you know, you don't have facilities yet onsite.
Questions, comments from the council? Counselor Nagy.
I just think this was overdue, and it's good to see, so, thank you.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Counsel for Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven, zero.
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to bring up now Item Nine, is it in the correct order? We're going to go with Nine.
Nine instead of eight?
Nine is right.
Okay, we're going with Nine.
Public hearing in first passage for amendment to the zoning and land use code, Article 12, performance standards regarding changes to allowances for some home occupations. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, zoning and land use, code Article 12, performance standards, receive first passage by roll call vote, and the public hearing on said ordinance be continued to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll move a second time.
Thank you, Counselor Chittam. Counselor Glant, thank you.
Again, I will defer.
Sure. So this item was raised, initially, the discussion in our department was around the home occupation requirements, and whether home bakeries at this point in time are required to go to the Board of Appeals for a conditional use permit. Bakeries are typically not a very hazardous form of food preparation, so that extra licensing and fee requirement, staff has noticed, has been a, there have been individuals who've decided not to open a business because of that. So we don't want to disincentivize home bakeries. So there are some changes that were made here to allow the home bakery to be in the Home Occupation One level, which is a less stringent level. They don't have to go to the Board of Appeals for the conditional use permit. When we went to the Planning Board with this, the Planning Board asked if there were other things in the Home Occupation section that staff might recommend changing, and so we went back and we looked at other elements, looked at what was in that Home Occupation Two, which has a much higher standard, and whether we felt like there were some things that could be moved into Home Occupation One. So there are some other changes here, allowing very small farm stands, you think of kind of like the pie stand, the, you know, egg stand, that sort of thing, as a Home Occupation One. And then also, we had a provision that individuals who are, have clients that come onsite, you think about a music instructor, or, you know, therapy, or something like that, you could only be serving one client or family at a time. For someone who does lessons or group therapy, that's very restrictive. So we've added a provision where you're limited to the number of times a day where you could have, you know, up to four individuals together. So it does provide for slightly larger. We think it will still, well, in our opinion, which you may not agree with, we don't think which you may not agree with, we don't think it would cause significant traffic or other congestion concerns, so we thought it was reasonable.
Questions, comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Nagin?
Again, this is very good. I like the support for the small businesses in the neighborhoods. Yeah, it's great.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Yes, Counselor Chittam?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Director Norton, for that explanation. It helped me understand what some of the new language is. I was having trouble trying to fit a Home Occupation CPA, for example, with forty or fifty clients, and I understand there aren't going to be four or five of them there at a time. Can you help me understand how a Home Occupation Certified Professional Accountant, where he would fit, or she would fit, in this ordinance?
Yes, so there would be a Home Occupation One, where there are business or professional office, where the public comes onsite, which serves not more than four unrelated clients at a time by appointment only, and then would be limited to the, like, a couple times a day for that many people. Otherwise, it's one at a time, or one family at a time. So like, a husband and wife could come at a time, but not a larger group.
So on April thirteenth, the CPA can see forty-five people, as long as they're not all at the same time?
Yep.
No more than four at a time?
Yep.
Okay.
Fast appointments if you're going to do forty-five.
And they would have to make appointments, though?
Yes, they would. It wouldn't be walk-in.
You just can't show up on the door, because this is going to be good news to the CPAs out there, that you can't just show up at my door and expect me to provide tax preparation services for you.
That's right, yeah.
Surveyors, too.
Yes. Thank you.
Further comments, questions from the council? Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Counsel for Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Now we're up to item number eight.
Okay, so this is the definitions section. Oh, I'm sorry.
One second, one second. We appreciate your enthusiasm for planning and code.
Yes, public hearing in first passage for amendment to the zoning and land use code, Article two, definitions for changes to the definition of a single-family dwelling and the addition of a definition related to home businesses. Requested action that the proposed amendments to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinance is zoning and land use code, Article two, definitions regarding single-family dwelling and home businesses, receive first passage by roll call vote, and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
Yes, sir. So moved.
Counselor Chittam, thank you. Second by Counselor Herman. Yes, Deputy Director Norton, please continue.
Okay. So there's a couple of changes to the definitions section. The first has to do with the dimensions of a single-family detached dwelling. So currently, the way our definitions are structured, that type of home has a length-to-width ratio of less than four to one. I'm not exactly sure why this was put in the ordinance when it was. At this point, staff thinks that it's limiting. If you have a skinny lot, perhaps a skinny house could go on it, and it, you know, could be quite deep. So we're just recommending striking that language. And then the second change is adding a definition related to the home occupations. We were just discussing a definition for potentially hazardous food that is related to the need to differentiate what types of home food preparation are allowed as Home Occupation One at bakery versus something that's considered by the state as potentially hazardous, which needs refrigeration or heat. So, you know, if you have a home bakery, you can't make cheesecake, for example, because it has to be refrigerated afterwards. So we need, we need to define that in order to be able to differentiate.
Questions, comments from the council? Counselor Nagin?
The only question I have is, was there any discussion about the sixteen-foot width? And I know that that was originally put in as, is an attempt to block mobile homes, but I'm just wondering, this specifically relates to single-family residences, so this doesn't affect, like, townhomes or row houses, or would they need to be sixteen feet wide? That's my question.
So a single-family detached dwelling, so not attached.
So if they're attached, then, okay.
Yep. But there was a little bit of discussion at the Planning Board about the sixteen feet. Ultimately, they decided not to make a change, but I don't think they felt strongly on that.
I was just curious, because it's like, you look in New Orleans, and, you know, the shotgun shacks are like, all the rage nowadays, and they're built like, out of necessity in economy, and they're generally ten feet wide, right? And so it's one of those things, we're having a difficult time getting starter homes built in our community, you know, ADUs, things like that. That's why I was asking about it, but I like all the other changes. Thank you.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Yes, counsel for Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Thank you, Deputy Administrator. I appreciate your assistance, and I'm really glad you're here. Item number, and thank you, you too. Item number eleven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, public hearing and adoption of the FY twenty-twenty-six Lewiston Capital Improvement Program Bond Issue Order. Requested action to hold a public hearing and adopt the FY twenty-twenty-six Lewiston Capital Improvement Bond Issue Order authorizing the issuance of eighteen million, six hundred eight thousand, six hundred twenty-eight in FY twenty-twenty-six public improvement bonds, making an appropriation for certain capital projects.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glenn, second by Counselor Nagin. Director Roy, can you please kick us off?
If you remember the presentation to the council, the very first presentation was January seventh of twenty-twenty-five. We were generally requesting twenty-one point nine million. That has been brought down to the eighteen point six million with the reduction of three point three million. I don't know if you have any questions?
Okay, well, thank you for kicking us off. Yes, questions, comments from counselors? I think we've been over this a lot, but yes, Counselor Chittam?
Not so much a question as a comment. Of this eighteen million, only eleven point five would be funded by general revenues. The remaining seven million or so is funded by enterprise funds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Enterprise funds being water, sewer, and stormwater.
Further questions from the council? Public comment for this agenda item? And back to the council? Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Counsel for Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
No.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Motion passed as by a vote of six to one.
Item number twelve?
Resolve making appropriation for the water sewer and stormwater budgets for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Requested action to approve the resolve making appropriation for the water sewer and stormwater budgets for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Herman?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chittam. If you two can please introduce yourselves and then kick us off.
Kevin Gonye, Director Lewiston Public Works.
I'm Erica Kidd, Deputy Director for Public Works.
Good evening. We're before you tonight for two rate increases. The first we'll talk about is the Lewiston sewer rates. We've got some graphs to kind of go over. We're trying to show the... So we're showing here the history of some of our sewer rates. The last rate was, increase was eight years ago. These are based on residential user is about eight thousand cubic feet per year. If you look at what that boils down to, we're looking at a twenty-nine, twenty-nine cent per day increase for the average residential home. And generally looking at, prior to that, we've been very stable in our, it was eight years before that on our rate increases. So probably go next slide.
Sure. And I will say, excuse me, I did have to make an update to the slide, and the three following I had shown on there, the prior rate increase for FY twenty-seventeen, it actually was in FY twenty-eighteen. So if you just happened to notice that that dollar amount is over one year, that's why.
So this is just showing our consumer price index relative to our increases. We tried to flatline and carry things and hold things flat. We're converting this to a quarterly bill on how we expect average homeowners to see their sewer bills. So it's been eight years since our last increase, and you can see we're looking at about twenty-five dollars per year. Once again, if you look at twenty-twenty-two, you can see the consumer price index really jumps up. We were flatlined until this year, and then for next fiscal year, we have our increase. This is a comparison between last year's expenses and all of the budget items compared to the current FY twenty-six that you're approving tonight. So we actually look at moderate increases on payroll, debt service, treatment plan is flat, and operating expenses. I believe capital outlay, we're using some, some revenues. And this is general percentages of looking at what the expenses are on this pie chart. So you can see that the treatment plan is making up forty percent. Right now, we've been challenging and trying to make sure that we're separating and getting stormwater flow out of, out of our flow going to the sewer treatment plant. Auburn's doing, the Auburn Water District is doing the same thing. We're trying to stay at the same percentage. So our treatment percentage is sixty percent, generally speaking. We've been carrying about sixty-six percent just for budget purposes. We're right in there, give or take a couple percent per, per quarter, per month. As long as that doesn't change dramatically, the last time there was a big shift, Auburn Fiber was in operation over a decade ago. That business folded, and then we saw our portion of the sewer treatment expenses go up. So if you compare that pie chart to this FY twenty-six current budget, we're still looking at similar for treatment plant, debt service, operating expenses. So we're trying to be fiscally conservative, but still stay in compliance and provide services. And once again, this is a comparison of our total operating cost and the treatment plant cost for what they're doing for services for us. So I can say that the sewer treatment plant is always looking ahead, similar to we do on our collection system regulations, and looking to see what's coming in the industry. Right now, the challenges that they've been dealing with that we haven't had big expenses on is the PFOS, or the forever chemicals. But what they have done is they were doing some co-gen and using some methane gas and generating power. That's continuing to keep our treatment costs down. Currently, they're building the large CSO storage tank at the front of that facility. We will be, we're using some American Recovery Act funds for that on the Lewiston side, so we're not seeing rates in relation to that. But that operational cost, most of our flow is going into that. We're sixty-six or higher percentage utilizing that, that tank. And this is another, just with some quantitative numbers showing the current trends and where we're at, trying to stay in compliance, provide services, and keep rates low.
So this is just showing where Lewiston sewer rates are in comparison to some of the other sewer utilities throughout the state. The highlighted yellow to the left is where we are at currently. The average cost per year for residential use is four hundred and eighty-nine dollars a year, and where we're proposing to go to is the yellow bar towards the right, and that is five hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year. So it's about a ninety-nine dollar a year increase. That does get charged quarterly, so it's about twenty-five dollars a quarter. And we are staying, as you can see, towards the left side, the lower, the least, lowest, least expensive range compared to other utilities throughout the state. We do have Auburn on there right now, where, you know, only a few dollars apart. We'd be going up a little bit with this rate increase. I believe their most recent rate increase was a couple of years ago, so they might be looking to go, you know, for an increase again in a few years as well.
And on that note, I can tell you that, you know, we are, we are trying to keep our local businesses. So many years ago, Auburn was actually charging for things like total suspended solids, BOD, and anybody that has higher strength or possible higher pollutants that they're into the regulated part under the treatment plant. For years, we never, prior to me even coming there, we weren't assessing those to our businesses. So we want to keep Country Kitchen here. We want to keep Boston Brands and Baxter and all those state businesses that have high strength, waste discharges into the sewer, but don't pose a threat. They're not a violation, so we work with them. So there's, we're not charging that. That's being borne across all users, and I believe Auburn did get away from that a couple of years ago, and it's, it's also a billing issue, right, to add that and make your adjustment. So we are strictly absorbing those type of costs incurred to Lewiston across all users, and trying to just keep our businesses, but also keep all rates low.
Then we get into stormwater rates. So we're looking at going from sixty dollars a year for residential rate to seventy-six dollars a year. And again, that would be billed out quarterly, about nineteen dollars a quarter. We showed for a comparison the storm rates versus the CPI, and it's a generally a similar trend. Our last rate increase for storm was also in twenty-eighteen. That's the end of our charts. Do you have any other questions?
Question, yes, Counselor Chittam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'll note, I'm glad to see these in color. They're very hard to decipher in black and white. If charts uses Xs and Os instead of the symbol, it wouldn't be so hard to decipher. I know we're saving money by not printing these in color, and I appreciate that. I do note that the dramatic increase this year of twenty percent might have been a lot more palatable had it been spread out over time. Looking at from two thousand and seven to current on the sewer bill, we've had a four point four percent annual increase. That's the average slope going from the two hundred and fifty-nine dollars to the five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I would suggest that we look at these bills on a much more frequent basis, instead of trying to flatline it and then all of a sudden making up the difference. This is, this is a big jump twenty percent in one year. So I would advocate for more frequent adjustments. And on the stormwater, similarly, we're looking at an overall five percent annual average increase since two thousand and six, and those are considerably higher than the CPI. So I gather there are costs that are beyond our control, that are not reflected in indices such as the Consumer Price Index. So I'm not challenging that. My big point is, I would rather see these increases come along incrementally than all at once, particularly when we're looking at two enterprise funds, stormwater and sewer. Were it not for PUC, I suspect we'd also be looking at water as well. So incremental increases as opposed to sudden jumps every five to eight years would be preferable in my book. Thank you.
Counselor Roy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would have to agree with Counselor Chittam on that. I think with everything going up in the world and all that stuff right now, I mean, my, my focus is on the seniors right now, who cannot fluctuate their income. I'm looking at, with the budget going the way it is, an increase in that. We've got an increase in stormwater. We get an increase in this. I think we're nickel and diming a whole lot of people all at once, and then with our, just everything going up, I think this is a lot to swallow for some people, and I'm having a hard time with it. But I appreciate the work that you're doing, and I would definitely try to lessen the blow with, again, more frequent increments instead of just, boom, here's five percent, boom, here's eight percent. It's very hard to swallow, so.
Counselor Nagin?
So ultimately, we know that in our wastewater runoff, we're trying to separate the sewage streams from the, from the wastewater runoff, which is something that we're updating right now, and also... And also, we have new regulations that we're following that have required us to spend more. Am I correct on that? Is that the way that you presented it last time?
Yeah, so on the sewer side, we're regulated under the, not only our existing regulations, but we have administrative order to meet certain timelines. So those are, it's not necessarily dictated by a dollar value, but in an outcome.
Right, and ultimately, it's the rate payer that's being affected here. So ultimately, if you're using the sewer, you're paying for the sewer.
Correct.
And so, yeah, unfortunately, these costs, you know, I do agree with the concept of an average that goes up, but I also know how we notify our city residents when things change, right? There's a cost to that as well. And so, you know, I don't know what the perfect system is, but I know that we're not, we're charging to cover a service that we have to provide. So that's the actual cost of the service. So I have no problem with either of the increases. In all honesty, we should probably look at water rates at some point.
Yes, Director, did you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to make a distinction. I think it's out there. We have brochures, we'll be updating of the stormwater brochure. The whole impetus for that, when it was created in like '07, it started through that thought process in 2001, was really to look at those entities and areas and uses that were creating impacts to stormwater, but then weren't paying it through the general fund or the taxes. So right now, even though we're looking at, you know, going up $16 per an average residential unit, and if you're a residential unit, we're not measuring how much impervious area you have. It's just not feasible to try to administer bills and keep track of that. So most utilities, like ours, are, it's like 2,900 square feet average, and everybody pays that flat fee. So we're saving a lot on the tax side because there's more entities contributing to the storm and likewise contributing to the revenues by paying that. So that stormwater utility, we've, we are regulated by MS4. I think we're doing some really big efficiencies, we talked about before, putting down less sand. We're sweeping the city right now. That's required, but it makes the city look good, too, and we're getting it done quicker. So we're finding ways to try to keep these expenses down and meet that. One last thing I would probably add is, is this my prop for the night? Everything comes down, everything comes down to a unit price, right? A gallon of water. So a gallon of water on the sewer right now is 1.17 tenths of a penny. So that's cost per gallon. Every time you flush, use the sink, take a shower, it's gone up by that amount. So the reality is, you know, we are being fiscally responsible. Some people aren't meeting their mens. So if you're at the low point, try not to conserve any more water. You know, understand, talk with us. If you've got a leak, talk with us. We want to keep your bills down. And on the storm side, we're looking at, this thing I was trying to figure it out. We'll get the number for the per gallon on the storm. But yeah, we're, we're actually trying to make sure that our rates are low for all users.
We appreciate your assistance. Councilor Chittam, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Gagne, you pointed out that high-strength waste is paid for across the spectrum. There is no surcharge for biochemical oxygen demand, BOD, or total suspended solids. That had been the practice in many municipalities to do that, and I think it may be worth philosophical discussion. I know there's benefit in keeping industry and business here in Lewiston, and that benefit may in fact be worth spreading the cost of treating that high-strength waste across all users and consumers. But I think a philosophical discussion needs to be had about whether or not that is the correct approach, looking at, as you know me, the data. How much does it cost to treat high BOD, high suspended solids waste? And what is the cost sharing of that? Is that worth the economic benefit of retaining those businesses in town? So I would welcome a discussion on that, and I'm not quite sure how to, how to set that up, a workshop perhaps, but I would like to have that discussion. It may well be that we end up with the same conclusion that we've got right now, that it is economically beneficial to all to spread the cost across everyone. But at least I'd like to have the discussion.
Councilor Najin, yes.
Just to back that up really quickly, with the redistribution of the taxes. In the past, industry was paying a higher tax amount than the single-family homeowner, and now that there's going to be a redistribution on that, maybe there is a need to look at it differently, so.
Public comment for this agenda item. Director of council, Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Three?
Yes.
Four?
No.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Thank you. Item number 13.
Item number 13, order approving a $150,000 loan for RIA Group LLC Doing Business as Democracy Brewing. Requested action to adopt the order approving $150,000 loan for RIA Group LLC Doing Business as Democracy Brewing.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Councilor Chittam.
Second.
Second by Councilor Najin. Dr. Libby, thank you for sticking around.
Sure thing, Mayor and Council. Good evening again. I'm Nate Libby, Director of Economic and Community Development. The order before you for consideration is approval of a $150,000 interest-bearing, non-forgivable loan to Democracy Brewing. As you may recall, although I think, I think it was the last council, so Councilor Herrmann and Mayor Shaline would have been around for this. The previous council, before most of you were here, before I was here, approved a $100,000 CDBG commercial forgivable loan to Democracy Brewing. That forgivable loan is effectively a grant and assisted in acquisition of the former St. Joseph's Church on Main Street, which is where they plan to open up their brewery, restaurant, and event center. So this request comes a few years later, after they've done a good amount of legwork to raise additional capital to make this over $3.5 million project happen. They've secured significant funding through the Finance Authority of Maine's C Capital Program, which is designed to incentivize private investment in startup businesses. This loan request came to us, I think, in January, and since that time, we've gone through an executive session with you folks to take your temperature. We've had the request underwritten by our contracted underwriters. We've had the request then reviewed by the city's loan qualification committee, and we're here today with a recommendation for approval. For the benefit of the public, some high-level information on this credit application. There are some positives and some challenges. Everything we're doing in the investment space in our department is about weighing risk against benefits, and we view our funds for business development as sort of the last money in to make projects happen. We are not a lender. We're not competing with the banks. The banks and the private equity groups and other non-traditional lenders are providing the lion's share of funding for this project. What we're asking for tonight is that final piece to make the project happen. So the underwriting gave us some pros and cons to evaluate. Positives, obviously, new employment opportunities, number one. Number two, collaboration with a variety of other entities who've stepped up to support this applicant. Number three, the preservation and renovation and reuse of a historic location. St. Joe's Church on Main Street is a beautiful church. It's been vacant for a long, long time. A lot of the community have very vivid and fond memories of when that church was in service. And so the fact that this project could bring it back to life in a, I think, a really vibrant and impactful new use is important and notable. That's also notable that the tax revenue generated from this project would help insulate us sort of in this, in this investment that we're considering. The experience of these folks is notable. They've operated successfully in the Boston market for many years. They were rated best restaurant by Boston Magazine in 2023, and they've done their homework. Their expense calculations are right in line with what we would expect for a business operating in Lewiston in this kind of market. Challenges on their request include aggressive projections for their first-year cash flow that should be moderated for break even. I think, by the way, James Raza, one of the principals of the group, is here in the audience in the front row next to Brian Doyle, our Economic Development Specialist. I think he and I would debate this point. I think he thinks the projections are practical and realistic. I think we look at it as the first year is challenging for any kind of startup business. This isn't a startup in the traditional sense. They've got a strong track record in the Boston market, but they are venturing into, into a new market here, and for that reason, we do treat it as a startup. Other challenges here, the city would be last in the collateral stack, given the other lenders that would be ahead of us. Another challenge is that due to the cooperative ownership structure of this group, they're a cooperative for-profit entity. But as such, they, where we typically ask for a personal guarantee of a business owner, we cannot ask for a personal guarantee in this instance because of that worker-owned structure. And then the other challenge here is cost of goods and cost of construction uncertainty that exists everywhere in the world that makes building and operating this kind of venture challenging. So those are the pros and cons. Loan qualification committee, which is made up of Acting City Administrator O'Malley. Moving forward, it'll be Administrator Kainrath, Finance Director Roy, Councilor Tim Galant, Andres Goggan Bank Loan Officer Karen Shaw, and myself. We make up the loan committee. We reviewed the underwriting analysis. We discussed the request. The underwriter recommended denial based on insufficient collateral and cash flow projections that are too optimistic. Loan committee reviewed that, that analysis, had vigorous debate on the pros and cons, and ultimately issued a unanimous recommendation for approval. And the reason for that approval, I've summarized in the memo, but basically, it comes down to Democracy Brewing's track record of success in the Boston market, their popularity, and their profitability, number one. Number two, the condition of St. Joe's Church continues to deteriorate with time. An injection of capital in the building, which is an anchor building in this part of town, we think has potential for spillover effects to trigger additional investment in that neighborhood, no matter if Democracy Brewing is in operation for 18 months or 18 years. If the two choices, in our view, are to give this group a chance, first, let the building continue its decline, staff and the committee are recommending approving this law. Finally, we think that this model is unique and caters to a part of the market that isn't well-served presently. It's, obviously, we have breweries. Obviously, we have restaurants. We have a small number of event centers, but we don't sort of have that combination altogether in a, in a historic site. And so we think they're, they're filling a void in the market that could work well for them. And investment in this building would match other investment that's going on in that part of Main Street, including what the Chorus Shrine Temple has invested over the last several years, what Lewiston Public Schools has planned for 287 Main Street, the Lowell Street Project on the other side of Main Street, which appears like it's moving forward. The former Walgreens store that, I just talked to the commercial agent for that building this week. There are a lot of potentially attractive reuses for that space, as well as the investment from Seaport Credit Union. So for those reasons, we recommend approval. I've given you probably more information you need to know on how this unique kind of financing facility would be secured. It would be secured through the promissory note, through an assignment, through an assignment that the owners would sign, sort of dictating how the collateral would be dispersed in the event of a default to the various creditors, as well as a deed in lieu of foreclosure that would be signed. It's a bit different. We typically are asked, we ask for and are given a mortgage to secure a loan like this. In this instance, we can't do that because of how the seed tax credit program works. So apart from that, it's a $150,000 loan, 3% rate, 13-year term. We give them a three-year period of grace to help get them established before requesting repayment. That represents the summary of the request. I'll note, if you would be willing to accept a friendly amendment on the resolve. I did, I did have a typo. I was looking at a sheet from January when I noted the gap that remains for this project. So in the second paragraph, I said and has raised all about $300,000 of their budget. So I was looking at an old record when I plopped that number in. Basically, this $150,000 we're considering tonight is the last piece of financing they need. And this will, this will bring their total to 3.7. They're waiting on architectural drawings to come back for final review and approval by the planning board. They, James has said they expect to start demo in July. So happy to try to answer any questions you have, and thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Director Libby. James, thank you for being here. I wholeheartedly support this project. It'd be great to get this former church, you know, developed and underway as a going concern here in Lewiston. I actually had the pleasure of visiting the location in Boston, just off of Boston Commons. The food was amazing. The service was excellent. One of the servers was actually from Maine. And yeah, a really, a really well-run establishment. I'm excited to have you guys here, so thank you. Yeah, further comments, questions from councilors? Councilor Sol?
Yeah, I loved this project the first time that I heard it. I think it's gonna be, hopefully be really great. Just having the building fixed is gonna be worth it. I have had some people asking me about parking. That's something that they have been concerned about. But other than that, I think, I think it's gonna be a great project, and I fully support it. So thank you for bringing it to Lewiston.
Councilor Najin.
What was the projected job creation? How many, how many jobs is it?
Twenty-six to 32, depending on our revenue.
Twenty-six to 32. And the amount of investment in the actual structure? In the renovations, how much money are you putting in?
So I'm inviting up James Raza, who's one of the principals behind the group. 3.7 is the total project budget.
But as far as into the building itself, do you have an idea of like how much? How many dollars are you putting into the, to the structure?
Purely renovation is a little over $2 million.
A little over $2 million, okay. One of the things that's really interesting about this space, and I don't know if you're familiar with McMinimans on the West Coast, but McMinimans takes disused buildings, right? Old theaters, churches, school buildings, and turns them into places much like this. And they're absolutely phenomenal when they work. I think this is exactly the location that would be successful. I'm obviously pro, so I'm glad that you've decided to continue to stick with this community in order to get this project up and running, and I will be one of your first customers, for sure.
Thank you.
In case the public is wondering, I have the mushroom tacos. Further questions, comments from the council? Councilor Chittam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Raza, congratulations, and thank you for coming to Lewiston to look at this project. I'm prepared to vote in favor of awarding this $150,000 loan. However, with that, I want also to extend lots of luck, because I really want to see this project succeed. And I have a feeling that you can do it, but I think you're gonna need a little bit more than just money. You're gonna need some, some luck, along with the dedication and hard work you put into it.
Public comment for this agenda item?
Charles Sol, 42, Bradley, Lewiston, Maine. As you know, I don't like the city acting as a bank. If they want the money, go to the bank. And the interest low, rate is a little low. What was the interest rate on the loan you gave to the airport? Was it a five? So what's the difference? And I'm just not for the city being in the... And I'm just not for the city being in the loan business. It just doesn't work out for the taxpayer, and if it goes under, it goes under on the taxpayer. And all the bills that interest, you know, you just talked about water sewer going up, taxes are going up, they're reevaluating property. When's it gonna end?
Matthew Agren, Ward Four. I'm really torn here on this one, because it's not gonna be easy to truly understand which way to vote on this one, because we want the city to be business-friendly, and we need more businesses to come in this. And they're rehabbing one of our old buildings to make this business work. But there were some serious concerns here. Our professionals, who we hired, our contracted loan underwriters, did the complete review and recommended denying the loan, as Director Libby said, because the collateral is not there and the cash flow projections are way too optimistic, in their view. For me, it's not the cash flow projections that worry me, because I looked at their business down in Boston. It's very successful. I feel that they have a plan and they can turn and get it up and running the way they want to. For me, it's the unsecured loan that bothers me. Now, in Director Libby's memo, he even, he says he originally wanted this loan secured with a mortgage or a UCC. My question to the eight of you sitting up there on the diocese is, are you willing to put $18,750 of your own money out there to invest in this, with the likelihood, if this fails, of being possibly unable to recover your funds if there is a bankruptcy or liquidation sale? Because that's what you're doing with the city money. That was in Director Libby's own comments. I mean, this is hard, because we need the business. He has a great business down in Boston. I looked you up, I did a lot of looking at this when this came through. I like the business. I think it'll do well here in that building if it's all rehabbed properly. But it's that concern of, if this goes under, the money may not come back to us. And where are we? Thank you for your time. Thank you for thinking about what I just said.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Counselor Longchamp, yes?
Yes, I just, I think it's a great project, and I thank you very much for being willing to come here and do business. I also think in life, there's always what-ifs, right? So I'm glad you're willing to take the chance on us, and I think you'll be very successful.
Okay. Administrator O'Malley, please call the vote.
Mayor, just before the vote's called.
Sorry, yes, Director Libby, oh, yes, the friendly amendment.
Counsel consider a friendly amendment to adjust that number from 300 to 150.
I'm gonna accept that friendly amendment.
Who, who was, Administrator O'Malley, can you tell me who first and second?
Counsel Chittam made the original motion.
Counsel?
That's fine with me.
Okay, and then who, who seconded it?
That was Counsel Najin.
Okay, I think we're good. Thank you, Director Libby, for that.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, the motion isn't changing, you're just changing that number on the second pair, second whereas from 300,000 to 150,000?
Yeah, correct, is a friendly amendment.
Okay.
I haven't forgot everything, because Kathy's not here.
Glad to hear that, because I don't know everything Kathy knows.
Administrator, Deputy Administrator O'Malley, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0.
James, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Director Libby, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
I'm number 14.
I'm number 14, order approving the acquisition of 6 Sand Hill Road and 687 Lisbon Street. Requested action to approve the order approving the acquisition of 6 Sand Hill Road and 687 Lisbon Street.
Have a motion, please. So moved. Counsel Chittam, seconded by Counselor Najin. Who seconded? Counselor Herman, there we go. Director Gagne, welcome back. Please kick us off.
Thank you. So it was several months ago, and we got an opportunity, we got a, we got a call from the property owner at 6 Sand Hill Road, Mr. Gary St. Laurent. He approached the Development Director at the time, and our city administrator, Acting City Administrator, and said, you know, is the, is Public Works interested in this? So we went and checked it out. That lot has some, some history to it, of being a staging site, has fill and stockpiles, and Gary St. Laurent had used it for over 20 years. We, there are some easements, there's a CMP corridor on that property. So we looked at it, we looked at what would we use it for. And to give a little history back, our current quarry that we're using for catch basin cleaning and, and other, if we do a trench and we have unsuitable soils, we were bringing all our, all of our soils to 94 River Road. And that was a former WE Clouchy Quarry that the city had, probably, probably 20 years ago, they got it. We, that, we filled that site up. Right now, we have about a year's worth of just storm drain material only going on to that site. The quarry is currently used for Lewiston Police to do their qualifying with their weapons. They have a range there. We are stockpiling some seasonal material there, but we're not actively filling. We're at a spot where it's a usable fill site, it's a usable staging site, not for fill. So we'd been looking, actually internally with PW, and said, where, where can we use some fill? It's not unsafe, it's deemed by DEP to be clean when we're moving them to catch basins, unless you see some contamination. So we had looked at multiple different sites, checked in with Development Director, and it just so happens that this, this one came up a couple months after we started looking. So this site is viable. I initially, everything, all the discussion was around 6 Sand Hill, and you go into Sand Hill and look at the site, and it seems pretty obvious. We did some checking on parcels and, and whatnot. So in talking with the owner and trying to negotiate, he is selling all of it. So I, I've amended this request to include the 687 Lisbon Street. That was since I had gone to the planning board and, and asked to have them make a declaration on the use and appropriateness for 6 Sand Hill. So Mr. St. Laurent would like to sell both parcels together, which is 6 Sand Hill and 687 Lisbon Street. So that's why I'm for you here tonight, to request for up to 185,000, that's the asking price. Have talked with, I'm not sure that's gonna be the price we settle on, but Gary has been patient in, in our process of evaluating and moving this forward. He has some material on site that has some value that he deems. He's asked the city to, to take option on it. If we don't, there are other contractors that he believes are, would be interested in this for his asking price.
So am I to understand that the sale price has not been agreed upon yet? We're still in negotiations?
I'm still in negotiations.
I see, okay. Yes, questions, comments from councilors? Counselor Chittam?
Well, it seems to me that our negotiations are coming to come to a screeching halt if we authorize 185,000. The wind will be taken out of your sails, Director Gagne.
There, there's some issues here that, you know, it's the materials on site and some other factors, so we're, we're close.
I'm looking at this, the assessed value of these parcels, and I fully realize that assessed value is different than market price. The assessed value on this totals $33,000. The, I'm gonna get a little weedy here. The state assessor compares actual with assessed values on property sold in each municipality throughout the state every year. The greatest out-of-sync valuation versus market value in Lewiston was 23%. In other words, the, the assessed value was 23% of the market price. This is 18%. We're paying over five times the assessed value at 185,000. And I'm, I'm concerned about the discrepancy between what our assessor values this at and what the asking price is. My understanding is that this offer came to the city, we did not go seeking it. So the question is, we're paying so much because we agree to pay that much. And I'm, as I said before, if we authorize 185,000 as a maximum tonight, your bargaining position all of a sudden has no legs at all. So that's a concern of mine. You've already addressed the question I submitted to you earlier about why 687 Lisbon Street is included in this, because that was not recommended by the planning board. I do have concerns when looking at the GIS, that it appears that the Sand Hill Road is actually using land that belongs to Central Maine Power Company. And I wonder if a survey's been done. We talked about having 10 years' capacity of spoils in here and finishing up at a two-to-one slope, which is fairly steep. But is that going to encroach on Central Maine Power Company land? And what sort of liability does the city incur if, in fact, it does? Because there has not been a survey done, I'm assuming. You indicated that the owner wants to sell Lisbon Street, 687 Lisbon Street, as a package. One of my questions was, the Sand Hill Road has a direct access through Sand Hill Road, and was the intent to use the Strawberry Patch Road as well? That's the Strawberry Patch Road, for the benefit of people who don't have a map in front of them, is actually the 687 Lisbon Street. Accessing the Sand Hill Road parcel through Lisbon Street does require either trespassing on Franklin Company land or Central Maine Power Company land, unless there's been an easement granted for that. So I see, I see a number of issues here, and I guess one of the main questions is, if this sale or purchase does not go through, you have approximately a year's spoil storage left on River Road. You just started looking for other sites. Have you exhausted other sites in the city as a backup plan?
There's a lot of questions there. Let me see if I can unpack them. So I do appreciate your email earlier, so I could prepare. There are, at this time, no alternative sites. We were actively looking. We will continue to actively look if this, if we do not purchase this. So the, I, I would like to not give up some of the other locations we're looking at, but I will share one of them, that it was a, a property that was a residential property. In talking with Development, the Development Director at the time, it was actually being considered for a residential subdivision. So that's the best use. We, we don't want to, you know, and, and back in the day, we had a long list of private property owners that had areas they wanted to fill. And we would permit those with code and planning, along with Public Works, to make sure we weren't impacting neighbors and drainage and all that. There's no lists like that right now. So our, our options to fill have, have been going away. So we'll continue to look. I think right now, this has some historic use. The two-to-one, we did factor in not encroaching and having any issues with the CMP corridor. So that's, that's using that space and appropriately. Strawberry Patch Road is a public easement, so we have access, we're plowing it now, grading it as needed, and we're not improving it, but we do have access to that. 687 would ensure that by owning the parcel as well. But the CMP corridor is actually more from kind of 6 Sand Hill, the, the north, northwest corner, and follow Strawberry Patch down through. So it's a very, it's a, I think it's a narrow property on it. Trying to remember other questions you had. We have not surveyed it, because until we decide to move forward, we don't have funds for this. The request is also to use the, the funds outlined in the, the request to, to pay for this.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at our, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at our GIS, and Strawberry Patch Road gets near to this site, but in order to get on the site, you either have to cross over Franklin Company land to the northwest, or Central Maine Power Company land to the southeast. There's no direct access without crossing another parcel of land. There is direct access from Sand Hill Road, however. Would the plan be to use Strawberry Patch? And it may be a moot point anyway, if the seller is interested only in selling both parcels together. If, if this is a package deal or no deal, then these questions may be moot, but it still raises the issue of having access to the site that you're looking at across someone else's parcel.
So there are easements, I haven't included those in the parcel, but we've looked at it, and we believe we have access to this. And we can do a, we can have legal look at it as well, that's what we'd want moving ahead, as well as do a survey, if that's the wish. But we, we believe we have access to it and by both, with both parcels.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To quickly, you know, continue what I said earlier, and then to build on what David said, I completely agree, like negotiations will be tough if we approve this tonight. I, I think that 185 is too high, and I don't know how this can be brought before us without a, without negotiate, without final negotiations. Like I, my recommendation right now to the council is just to table this, continue negotiations, and then see where we land out for a price, and then bring it back when everything is final. I, I think it's a little premature to, to do this now, and I, I mean, of course, like the seller wants to sell it for as much as possible, and we want to purchase it for as least amount as possible. I understand that completely. And of course, the seller is going to say that they have a lot of buyers for this piece of property, but this is in fact not riverfront property, it's a, it's a sandpit. I, yeah, I, I just don't recommend that we move this forward tonight without an agreement on, on the sales price. Counselor Galant?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I, tabling, I think, is probably our best advice, but I would like to know, if we do not find a piece of property, what is it gonna cost us to get rid of all this stuff? Because we could be paying $90,000 in the next year or so to somebody else for, and sometimes you have to pay more for something, so you have 10 years' worth of security. So, you know, I, I just don't want to see us angering or aggravating the individual trying to sell something to us. In, in the long run, we're gonna cut off our nose. So I, I know that the 185, and I'm not gonna say we should approve that tonight and table it, so we have some real negotiations, and if that's a hard number, come back with a hard number, that we're there, we know what we're doing. But I, I'm not afraid paying 185 for 10 years' security, knowing I can get rid of all this junk, while I have to pay somebody else the money. Sometimes you gotta pay more than something's worth, because we need it in the long run. That's not a huge issue for me. The issue again is, we don't have a final price. And, you know, he's a smart man, he's probably watching this, or he'll record it and see it tomorrow or the next day, and understand that's gonna give you some leverage anyways, because now you're gonna, he's gonna know that we're not comfortable with it. So, but I would like to know the cost over 10 years, if we had to go out and pay somebody, and I'm sure it's gonna be far more than, than 185,000, quite frankly, because getting rid of waste material is not cheap.
If I could, you know, Gary has been fair, I think he's, he's said he's firm on this. So, but, you know, the points you bring up are definitely have weight and importance. So I would, the materials we're looking to get rid of, they're not contaminated. They are, you know, wet sand coming out of catch basins, we have a water leak, and we are in the middle of February. It's that, those wet soils that aren't fit to go back into the hole, same with any of our other trench work. So the quarry that we currently have on River Road got filled up so fast, because we were letting all contractors go there. This was prior to probably 2020, and that site got filled up. Now, whether, that site right now is currently assessed at 180,000. So, you know, we can compare to assess versus market value, and I know all of our homes are not what they're assessed for. They're a higher market rate. I appreciate the conversation and the intro, you know, the support. I'll, we'll go with whatever you guys decide.
Counselor Najin?
So again, let's say we don't find a location. A year from now, our current fill site is full. What does it cost for a year to dispose of this material? full. What does it cost for a year to dispose of this material, if we don't have a place to put it?
To date, we haven't had to do that.
Okay.
Right? We've been handling it inside the quarry. We think we have one year's worth there. We're not taking spoils from other contractors on their jobs, trying to fill it up like had been doing the previous 15, 20 years. We are currently looking at the operations center, and how we are proposing to move some facilities from the Adams Avenue over to that River Road operations center area. But it, it's kind of like a balanced site, right? I don't, I don't have a big quantity that we're looking to use. Other options are, are city landfill. We don't want to put it in the landfill and take up space. But is there adjoining property or sell or something like that? So, these are the options we looked at, other than buying another parcel, right? So, other parcels that are available after that, we're looking at other pit owners and trying to dispose of, into their quarries.
So, ultimately, there is, we don't have a price, because we don't know what it would cost.
Right now, it's not costing us anything, because we've already paid for that 94 River Road, and, and it's not incurring an annual expense to that.
Okay. I, I get it. But what I'm asking, what I'm saying is, okay, let's say we say no, we're not going to buy this property. What happens? Like, that's, that's the question that I have.
We're going to keep looking for other options, and I don't, not sure what we're going to find. So, we've asked engineer, you know, engineering, our ops, ops managers, kind of looking at, you know, who could use fill? How much, how much time could we get there, if there's a, a site that opens up and, and has that? But right now, we don't, we don't have a list.
I, I don't think we're saying that this is a, a bad option or not the right fit. All, all I'm saying is that without a, a negotiated price, like, this, this agenda item wasn't ready to be one. Counselor Sol.
So, it sounds like he doesn't want to negotiate, like, he has a price. So, even if you go back to him, he's still going to tell you 185.
I apologize for being opportunist, opportunist positive about it, and trying to bring this forward and say we could get a lower price. But, yeah, I, I believe he's firm.
And I don't see property values going down in the next year. So, if we don't purchase it now, he could just come back and want more a year from now, if he still has that. So...
That, that's possible.
I understand the council wanting to hold off, but I have, I just think we're going to end up in the exact same spot. So, I would support this.
Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you said that the owner has other buyers, other contractors that might be interested in this parcel.
He has not talked with others. He's brought this to the city and been patient while we worked through our process. At the point, there's other contractors that have been coming into the city, that Neo Laydown area, you know, whether it's for pipe or their granular material, and, and this is totally suitable for that.
Okay. My, my point is going to be that with the new, with the revaluation, this $33,000 property may well increase in value. If we acquire it, then there are no taxes paid on it. If he sells it at $185,000 to another contractor, that would be very much closer to what the assessed value would be after the revale, because market costs are what helped determine the revaluation. That would be $185,000 worth of taxable revenue coming to the city, if it's purchased by another contractor. I, I can't believe that the city, the size of, I don't know how many tens of thousands of acres there are in Lewiston, that we can't find another site. I'm just, the thing that struck me was the differential between the, the assessed value and the 187, $185,000. I'm not prepared to authorize that expenditure tonight. I'm, I'm happy with the tabling motion.
No.
Did I make the motion, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, you did. It was seconded by Counselor Harriman.
Okay. We'll, we'll let it stand right there.
Yes. Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. I mean, I think, I think I'm following in line with Counselor Sol and Counselor Glant here. It sounds like, it sounds like the seller is somewhat firm on the price, even though we don't necessarily have a, a final, a final number. And then, as Counselor Glant mentioned, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of buying the, what we're going to do with the site, not necessarily the property itself. So, if we're, we're spending 18,500 per year to dispose of, of all this material, that seems like some, some, yeah, it seems like a fair price and a, you know, a good insurance policy, I guess, in case we don't find something else. I guess I'll also note that this is, this would be paid for with sewer and water bonds. So, it would be, I mean, most, many of the taxpayers also pay sewer and, and water rates, but it is, it is falling on the ratepayers rather than all taxpayers, if that gives anybody any, any consolation.
And, one second, Counselor Longchamp. Just to clarify, so, are negotiations still happening, or he's firm, or what, what exactly is going on, Director?
My last conversation with the owner is, he said, "Well, I think it's a fair price, and I'm, I'm fairly firm." And that's the feeling I got, was I'm fairly firm. I mean, I discussed, you know, I don't need, necessarily need the gravel, you know, there's other things on the property that he thought had value. I think the value for Public Works is having a site that we can bring it. There's not a large residential, or there are some residents there, but we would, you know, we've had issues with some of other, other sites and use. Montello Street Extension, that site is a, a water site. We were bringing fill there off hours and, and doing what we could during emergencies, and it caused issues with residents. So...
No, I, I understand.
I, I believe he's, you know, we haven't ended negotiations. That's it, you know, we haven't, you know, Gary's a very amenable guy, easygoing, too. So, I didn't get a written agreement. We didn't, that's the price. If I can get him lower, I'd love to get him lower. And, and, you know, I don't need his material and gravel that's on it, and he could possibly sell that. We want a fill on the site. The more space, the better. It's four-inch minus gravel. I know he had good gravel. Can we use it for other projects? But I'm looking for a fill site.
You're saying that if he sold the material on the site, that could potentially reduce the purchase price for us?
There's about 500 yards of four-inch minus gravel, and some other granular materials that he left there after he sold his business, and it's, it's there. It's about, you know, at our current price on what we're buying gravel, either onsite or delivered to our ops center, we're paying about $10 a yard. So, that's $5,000 to $7,000 of value. I did talk with Bill Healy. I don't want to throw him under the bus, but I was like, "Hey, what do we think? Can we weigh off?" So, he thought, you know, 32,000 to 35,000 was a little high, but it wasn't far off. That similar properties in that area and of that zoning, around 30 seemed reasonable. So, you know, at 30,000 an acre, we're looking at 168.9, and Gary's asking 185. So...
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Longchamp.
Yes, I was just going to say that.
Can you use your mic, please?
Yes. I mean, it sounds like we need a place, right? Whether it's now or in a year. And I think Mr. St. Laurent, you know, he's done a lot of business here. He's quite a fair man. So, I think this asking price, although it does seem high to us, but I think any number is going to seem high to us. So, I would definitely be in favor of purchasing the property, because it's something that we're going to need, whether it's now or in a year, when the price is higher, whether it's that property or somewhere else. Yeah. So, I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Counselor Najin.
So, you know, ultimately, I see the city administrator made the recommendation to approve the requested action. You're stating that you don't have a choice after a year, and that we haven't been able to find another spot. And so, at the end of the day, I don't even think the price, at this point, like, yes, it would be great if you could go back and say, "Hey, we're going to only pay you $100,000," right? I don't know if that's going to happen, right? But I also think that, right now, like, this moment, we should be thinking about what we're going to be doing once that place gets filled in 10 years. Because obviously, the situation we've wandered into is a mess, like, because we don't have a plan for the future, right? And so, like, we need a plan. But it's, it's sort of like the landfill. We know the landfill's going to get filled up. We should be working on...
So, our, our discussion and search started in, like...
One, one second, Director.
August or September.
One, one second. Did you, please finish.
Yeah, and that's basically it. I'm just saying that, like, like, I don't think we have a choice right now, in, in all honesty, unless you, you have a magic place that you haven't mentioned yet.
I, I would hate to, I hate to put, as, this is an emergency. It's not an emergency. I mean, we have a year, maybe more, but not, not 10. In talking with the operations manager, how much, how much grit we're removing? I mean, I just talked about the efficiencies we've done with putting less sand. That's less catch basin grit coming out. Maybe I have, you know, a couple of years or three years in there. I don't know specifically, because we're not measuring it in, to that degree. We've had this big quarry that everybody's just been filling. So, we're running out of space. We think we have about a year's worth left, is what our evaluation was. I, I don't want to seem like this is an emergency. It's not. It's an opportunity that came up. We're going to continue to look. I think there's other opportunities that we may come across. I, I don't want to, I'm being quite transparent with you all right now. I, you know, we've started looking at it in, like, August, September, and then this came up later in the fall. So, we're going to continue to look, even if this, I mean, really, if this doesn't work out, for whatever other reasons, we would ask the city to sell the property and put it back on the market.
Okay. We're now going to public comment for this agenda item.
Matthew Aggron, Ward Four. This is a 10-year purchase, looking forward. I like the fact we're looking, this is going to give us 10 years. That's a great part of this. The problem I have is it came before you without a price tag. There's a, it won't be any higher than, but that's not a price tag. That's lack of transparency. Something I, our new city administrator said that was a priority for him. Something that should be a priority for all of you. We need to see what's this going to actually cost us. When you approve 185, that's its price. There's no, that's what he's going to get, as his, that's what he's been told he can get? That's what he's going to be, that's what he's going to ask for. Maybe wait two weeks, have him come back, and approve it then. Table it for two weeks. Thank you.
Further public comment? Back to the council? Oh, yes.
Melissa Dunn, Blake Street, resident Lewiston. I don't know much about this, but I know you can always sell the property. It's equity. And I just wanted to mention, there's condos in Lewiston being sold for $250,000 for three-bedroom, and I know because I'm in one.
Further public comment? Now, back to the council. Yeah, I, I guess it's, I leave it to the counselors, is how they want to move forward. It now sounds like Gary is firm on that price, and, yeah. Counselor Glant.
Let's move the question, please.
Do we have a second for that?
A second.
Administrator, Deputy Administrator O'Malley, please, please call that vote, to move the question.
Motion to move the question, Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Is this approving this?
No. No, this is to move the question.
We're voting, we're voting to vote.
Saying, no more, no more discussion.
Yes.
Yes.
Please proceed to the vote.
Seven to zero. All right. Now, we're going to vote on the main motion, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Council for Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
No.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Six?
No.
Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
No.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you, Director Gagne.
Thank you.
We are now at, before we move to the next item, Deputy Administrator, we're now at 9:23. Does the council wish to take a quick break, or soldier on?
There are only two agenda items left.
All right. Well, we will...
So, in an hour and a half, we'll be done.
Yeah. Right, yeah, exactly. Okay. All right. We are now on item number 15.
Item number 15, resolve authorizing the city to participate as an equal partner with the Auburn Water District to complete a study on the water treatment options and possible intake extension at an estimated cost of $100,000. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the city to participate as an equal partner with the Auburn Water District to complete a study on the water treatment options and possible intake extensions at an estimated cost of $100,000.
I have a motion, please.
So, move.
Yeah, Counselor Chidham, seconded by Counselor Najin. Deputy Director Kidd, Director Gagne, please kick us off.
Thank you. This project is, is ongoing to protect our drinking water. I put it as bluntly as that. We put our UV facility in and up and running in 2012. We are a full partner with the Auburn Water District, joint intake, joint treatment facility, and then we split off. Our watershed protection efforts have been going on since the early 90s, and this project is really to continue to keep us in compliance with our drinking water. We've been at risk for different alum, excuse me, different algae. So, in 2018, we did a copper sulfate. That's when Erica joined us and was at the pleasure of overseeing that project. And then, we did a follow-up alum treatment in 2019. Part of the different evaluations out of the different studies over the years has been, what if we move the intake deeper? And that was recognized as a very viable option, because then your turbidity from the high winds and your mixing on the top of the lake is less affected on that intake. And that's what the joint intake did for us when we did that in the early 90s. So, this, we look at that. And there's other threats. So, are we worth spending our money on the intake, or are we spending money on other treatment methods? And I'll let Erica go into some of those other studies that this will be looking at.
Yeah, that is kind of the high-level overview of what this joint study would look at, extending the intake.
Can, can you just move the mic closer to you? Thank you.
So, we would be looking at possibly extending the intake, or what type of different treatment processes would we need at our treatment plant? We currently do not have a filtration plant, which is unique. There's only eight other water utilities in the state that operate like we do, because we have such good water quality. But we have seen water quality changes in the lake over recent years, as Kevin mentioned. So, it'd be looking at our water quality data, our current treatment processes, seeing if there are improvements, or different techniques we could use for treatment, and then the actual infrastructure, too. So, does moving the intake based on our water quality data make sense? And we've worked with Auburn Water District a lot in the past on different projects like this. So, we're, we would be a 50/50 partner, and the most recent proposal I have for this work is about $100,000, but we would be splitting that. So, it would be about a $50,000 cost to the City of Lewiston. And we do have bond funds under water treatment available to use for this, that actually need to be spent down.
Anything further? Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is money well-spent. Our drinking water is one of our most important resources, and, like you said, we don't need a filtration plant because of the water quality now. And hopefully, what we learn from this study can help us stretch that a little further, and maybe we'll, we'll need one in the future. But if we can push that off a few years and push that cost off, that would be great. So, I fully approve this.
Thank you.
Yes, I've spent an enormous amount of my time as mayor advocating for, for our water source, and yes, fully support this as well. Further comments from the council? Counselor Chidham.
This is an opportune time to say that it's, while we do have a waiver, that's not a guarantee in the future. And I think we need to recognize that the Twin Cities may be looking at a 50 to 60 million dollar investment, and we need to begin planning for that eventuality. It's not, let's hope it doesn't ever happen, because ultimately it will. It's not going to happen maybe in five years or 10, but it ultimately will, just like running out of the landfill. Let's not wait until, gee, we only have two years left, or, you know, we've been told that within five years, we have to build a $60 million. we have to build a $60 million filtration plant. So not germane to this particular issue, but let's, let's be aware and be continually cognizant that this, this is a vast upcoming expense.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Counsel for Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven, zero.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Item number 16.
Resolve to establish a vision zero policy to eliminate traffic-related deaths and serious injuries on the City of Lewiston streets by 2040. Requested action to approve the resolve to establish a vision zero policy to eliminate traffic-related deaths and serious injury on the City of Lewiston streets by 2040.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Nagin, second by Counselor Chittam. Well, I was going to have Dr. Gagne kick us off, but, Dr. Gagne, is there anything you'd like to say?
Good evening. I'm, I'm still here. Thanks for being here as well. I'm going to try to be quick. Okay. So we are partnering with the Andersgoggin Transportation Resource Center, the ATRC, the Maine Department of Transportation, the City of Auburn, and we completed our Safe Streets for All Study resulting in a safety action plan for Lewiston. We gave you a presentation of that in March. We also have in the council order, actually, the agenda information sheet, the 250-page action plan for Lewiston in a hyperlink. So for the public out there and for each of you, we didn't want to print that, and you can download it and view it. I'm here tonight to, to talk about what that Lewiston Safety Action Plan, how do we adopt it? And then adopt a vision zero policy. What's the importance of that? So really, vision zero really moves away from, from looking at the victim and looking at that situation and really prioritizes safety, prioritizes human life, and really looks at the safe system approach by federal highway administration. It's been all across the country. It's based on safe speeds, safe street design, safe vehicles, safe road users. So it's a multi-pronged approach to decrease and ultimate goal is to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injuries. That's not just pedestrians. That's not just bicyclists. That's not just people in vehicles. That's everyone. In essence, vision zero is a commitment to creating a transportation system where no one is killed or seriously injured. So in our, in our safety action plan, we have the high incident network. We have a big list of things that public works and the rest of the partners, PD. We're looking at school systems to try to address this. Vision zero really, federal highway has resources for us to use, toolkits, guidance documents, training materials, to help support that vision zero. So they are at the table with DOT and our local partners. There are some improvements that could be supported. We're also competing regionally. So when you compare us to a large city like Boston and New York, there, there's not a lot of money coming at us, especially in light of what's currently going on with federal funds. But it doesn't mean that we can't try, and we will definitely put in grants and try to, to build on things. Our partners across the river, on May 5th, 2025, the City of Auburn did pass a resolution committing to a vision zero goal by 2040. This project was done in partnership with them as a group study between Lewiston and Auburn, but we came out of it with a Lewiston-specific plan. So I'm before here tonight to, to get your adoption of the resolution and support vision zero.
Thank you. Counselor Galant.
Thank you, Mayor. If we don't adopt this, will it affect us with grants or anything else?
I think the federal highway administration looks favorable upon adopting a vision zero. There's some discussion about the timeline of when that vision happens. Is it 2040? Is it 2045? I heard today in a meeting with DOT that they're kind of writing in 2045 for that. So I don't think that there's any repercussions as far as you're going to get penalized or, but funding is very competitive. I can't say we're not going to get it, but this is part of the village planning initiative. Parting of the, this SS4A study was to try to go after those state and federal grants to help support and do some of the initiatives that we've been trying to do as part of our comp plan, as part of our River Island Master Plan and overall connectivity, so.
I mean, I support the idea. I don't support any resolution. It's kind of like, we're all going to have electric cars. You know? I mean, it has no teeth. You know, there's nothing we can, we're going to do things either way without a resolution in this whole process going forward. And as I read through this, I don't see what's doing anything. You know, quite frankly, it's a bunch of words that's going to make somebody, somebody feel good that we're all agreeing that by 2040 or whatever it's going to be 40 years from now, we're going to be, and some person's going to walk out in front of a car and poof, there goes your whole plan. Or, you know, you're going to not have cars by then. We'll be flying in the air, bumping into each other, and we'll have to have another resolve. So I just don't like resolves to be to have no teeth. Okay, this is just verbiage. And if we have to have it to get grants or to look good in the public eye, I guess I'll support it. But if it's not required, I just don't let this say I'm going to do something that I know I can't do personally. I don't know the city can do this either. They can try. They can go for benchmarks. But in my opinion, it's just words. So that's my thoughts.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't see any overt costs to the city in adopting this resolve. I, I hear Counselor.
I'm sorry, can you please repeat that? You don't see any?
I don't see any overt, any obvious costs in adopting this resolve. I agree with Counselor Galant with, it's a bunch of words, but I do have a particular concern and a question. Item number four in the resolution says, "The City of Lewiston recognizes that speed is a critical factor in crash survivability and shall consider the adoption of context-sensitive speed limits." My understanding is that the City of Lewiston has no authority to set speed limits whatsoever.
That is not necessarily true. If they're not posted, they're 25. If then they're in downtown areas. We have been in conversation with DOT. I think that they're on board with this approach. This is a, the up-and-coming trend for how we change our streets and how we change our neighborhoods. And, and so I, I think there's opportunity to do that.
I agree with the precept here. I think that the concept is, is great, but I don't think that we have, and Deputy Administrator O'Malley shook his head as well. My impression is that if we want to change a speed limit in the City of Lewiston, we have to have Bruce Abargu, and he's the district traffic engineer for DOT, go through a year-long study and process in order to affect that. I, I've tried to implement speed change requests here in Lewiston and found that we don't have the authority to do that. This is coming from DOT. Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Like, Deputy Administrator O'Malley, maybe you'll add his context from his experience with PD, the conversations that I've been part of. And in this, this safe streets approach, as well as our village planning initiatives, I'm not getting that, that solid piece. Our demonstration project, they're looking to do traffic calming. So if that's the context piece of getting people to slow down without having an actual posted speed change, those are things we can do. Actually changing the speed limit, I'm not going to disagree with you. I haven't done it yet. And if you've been challenged, but that's not the, that's not what I'm hearing from DOT.
Okay, well, I've made my point. I'm not going to oppose this, but I, I do not think that passing this resolve, which says we will change speed limits, will allow us to do that. So I think we're, we're saying that we're going to do something that we are statutorily prohibited from doing. And if we could remove that, excuse me, if we could remove that context-sensitive speed limits from the resolve, I'd be 110% in favor of it. I'm, I'm still in favor of it even without removing that, but I'm raising the issue.
I'm sorry, Deputy Administrator O'Malley, did you want to chime in here?
Yes, I'm not looking to contradict what my director of public works has said. But I was on the ATRC policy, and we were told that, as Counsel Galant pointed out, we need to pass this so it will help us get grants from Maine DOT. The idea is this, is it's showing the city's commitment to reducing fatalities, eliminating traffic issues, creating safer streets and transportation systems. Yes, I agree with Counsel Galant that, yes, it is maybe pie in the sky for some of it. It may make some people feel better, but this is something we need, basically a block we need to check off when we're applying for funds over the next number of years. We want to show that we're cooperating and we feel like we want to create safer streets in our city. And that's why it was brought forward to you. And I am on the ATRC policy. And that's how it was explained to me when we had this 252-page document that they gave us.
Thank you. Counselor Soul.
Well, I was literally going to say exactly what Deputy Administrator O'Malley said. Not quite as elegant, but essentially, this is saying that we are going to support you and all the other departments that need to do this. It was not necessarily Lewiston that's going to change speed limits, but we're going to support the partners who can get all this done. And so that's how I took it. And it's not going to hurt, right? So it's only going to help. And I, I hear what Counselor Galant is saying, just, but yeah, it's going to show our support and wanting better for our streets. So, yeah.
Counselor Nagin.
At the end of the day, you know, I understand that people are afraid of, of supporting a resolve because people are still going to die in traffic accidents, I guess is, is the logic behind that. But the point is, we're trying to support a redevelopment of our streets, which were built for industry, which were built in order for people to go as fast as humanly possible through our residential neighborhoods, in order to get to jobs, with no regard for the people who actually live here, in a way that actually restructures it so it's more equitable. And I don't see any issue with the resolve itself or with working with several different departments across the state and federal government in order to make sure that we, we actually address the fact that we have a handful of pedestrian casualties every single year. And I know that there's always a game of like, it's the pedestrians' fault, but it's dead people that we could probably avoid. So I, you know, I support it, so.
Yeah, maybe it's getting late at night, but this should be a slam dunk for us. We're having a lot of hand wringing over wanting safer streets, but, all right, public comment for this agenda item?
Again, Matt Roy, Ward three. So yes, this is a laudable goal. Counselor Galant is right that it basically checks boxes. So maybe, you know, the federal government and/or state government will give us money. But no one in these federal agencies, state, federal agencies or state agencies thought calling a policy to prevent future deaths by traffic-related incidents, vision zero. I don't think Hollywood could come up with something more ironic, oxymoronish, or hypocritical to call a policy to prevent traffic-related deaths. We do not want zero vision, although you could, I guess you could argue that having vision towards zero deaths. But, you know, on a first glance, vision zero should not be in the same sentence as a policy to mitigate traffic-related deaths and other, and serious injury.
Yes.
Melissa Dunn, Blake Street, resident in Lewiston. I appreciate of this discussion, even though we don't know the state of federal funding and where it's going to land any of us or people that we care about. I don't think it's a joke at all, this issue. When I grew up, I was growing up at Place St. Marie, and on Lincoln Street, there was a young girl that got hit by a vehicle. She was in a full body cast and had, she was my best friend at the time. She had to be out of school. And it was really traumatizing for me to experience that as a young kid, to see my friend that way. Recently, September 2022, my friend Donnie that I actually went to school with was killed in a vehicle, when a vehicle collided with him on Sabatus and Blake Street, I mean, Sabatus and College Street. And since then, we've heard more of people passing from, from car accidents, pedestrians being hit. Just walking the streets myself, I've had near accidents, accidents that I've experienced. And I think overall, the design, how Lewiston is set up with the design and the one-way streets and things like that, there was conversations around Planapalooza. I don't know if it was Better Block or another organization, or somebody eventually came after that time or around that time and was educating city officials and city staff around what people could do to improve roadways, to make it safer for pedestrians. And so this is not an issue that's not going to go away. We are a walkable, essentially not fully walkable, but walkable city. People have to get to where they're going, and they usually do so by foot. So I think it's good to take a public stance on this. And, you know, the, the pie in the sky reference, you know, it won't be in the sky if everybody gets to the table and takes their piece and does their part, right? And so we are going to get out of it as much as we put into it as far as public education, prevention, education and all that. So thank you for, for speaking about this. This is very important. I don't want to lose any more friends or see them injured.
Matthew Aggron, Ward four. Like Counsel Galant said, this resolve is a nice bit of feel-good and say we did something in the moment to cross a box off so we can get future grants. Instead, the City of Lewiston needs to put the Lewiston Safe Action Plan, which I read all 250 pages, very inspiring. For example, the crosswalk on East Avenue. Let's go back to that one, between Webster and Sabatus. Part of the objective in that plan says to fix our crossing options by slowing down traffic, making it safer to cross with pedestrian island and narrowing the roadways. Why don't we just put this into play ourselves? Not wait for the various partners to consider whether or not they'll help us do it. You know, yes, we don't have the money to do all of this on our own. But the feds and the state aren't going to be able to give us all the money we're going to need to do this on our own. It's a great goal. And like I said, I read all 250 pages of that PDF. It was long. I couldn't sleep. But we need safer streets. I have a coworker who's been almost hit five times on a bicycle coming to work. He bikes in from out in, deep in Ward seven, I believe, on, near No Name Pond. He's almost, maybe that's six, my sidekick just told me. But he's almost been hit coming to governors multiple times. Both stopped at lights and while riding. Our streets aren't designed to have bicycles on them because they're old. And bikes weren't considered when we put them in. How many accidents have there been on East Avenue? More than we need. I had a CMP truck pull into my driveway and then ask permission because they had to do work on the pole then. They were telling me they've had five of their trucks hit in the last two years along East Avenue and other roads. I really wanted to know how you miss a large, orange truck with jacks out and a bucket up above it. But I digress. I got hit on Lisbon Street a few years ago, almost driven into a sign by a woman who never saw my car. Speed, speed kills. That's the big thing. We need to slow our speeds down. Look at the speeds in front of the schools. We need to slow our speeds down, look at the speeds in front of the schools. Thank you.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Deputy Administrator, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Director Gagne, we appreciate your commitment to Lewiston.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
We're going to stick around for a little bit longer. We are now up to the second public comment period for those of you who didn't comment during the first one. It's now closed. Now we're up to reports, yeah, reports and updates. Yes, Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. The Senior Advisory Committee, we met today. We're putting together a newsletter to go out to the community, about 16,000 letters will go out here in the next couple of months to get our program boosted and going forward. We have been meeting over at the Armory, so if someone's come here looking for a meeting, we moved over there, parking's better. We meet again next month. Look at my calendar, I can tell you what day. Sorry about that. June 10th at 3:00, and we're sending two of our individuals to Bangor to an aging conference that the state's putting on to bring back data and information on how we can move that program forward. I have a second item, if I can continue?
Please.
Financial, our finance committee is in much dire need of two individuals. We just lost two. We have a very busy summer where people take time off during the summer. We still meet twice a month with all the stuff that's coming through, especially in July. So if you're interested in being on the finance committee, please get an application in the mayor as soon as possible. It makes it a lot easier for us when you only have three, and you need three votes to pass something, it becomes quite difficult to move things forward. And lastly, I would bring this over to the city administrator. I'd like to have loitering ordinance put on our next meeting for a workshop. I'm tired of seeing push carts in front of the library and bags left everywhere. I'm tired of seeing people making campsites next door here in the park. Our ordinance right now doesn't have any teeth, and I think we need to revisit it. I've already let the planning, I've already let Director Connors know that I have great interest in this. I think that we could make the city much better, as the administrator spoke earlier about, by doing some little things, and one of those would be just policing ourselves, making these people move around. You're going to sit in a library, your stuff can't sit out front. You know, if you're going to sit over in a park, you've been there for two hours, move on. We have somebody who marks cars and things like that. If they're going to walk around out here and check driver's license, they can walk through the park and keep track of people and stop them from building 10 homes during middle-of-a-time, so our citizens can get out there and use that lovely park. Thank you.
Counselor Glant and Counselor Chittam, do we know when the next finance committee meeting is?
It's a week, a week from yesterday.
But that's going to be Memorial Day, right?
June 2nd, June 2nd.
June 2nd is the next one.
Right? June 2nd.
Okay.
June 2nd is a Monday. Next city council meeting is June 3rd.
Correct, June 2nd, sir.
All right, June 2nd, thank you. Anything further, Counselor Glant?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, who's next? For reports and updates. We're now up to new business, should there be any? Counselor Herman?
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I'd like to ask for an agenda item at our next meeting or soon after, now that the police department has announced they'll be actively enforcing the abandoned-vehicle ordinance. I had a constituent reach out to me who was ticketed for that. They had been parking in the same manner they'd been parking for years. I was not aware that we had such an ordinance, and then when I read it, I was surprised that it was, your car is considered abandoned if it's been parked in the same place for 24 hours on the street. That's just not really reasonable for people who don't have driveways. It really restricts what they're able to do. So I wasn't able to get all the information I was looking for from the police department, but I would propose, I'd like to have an agenda item to discuss a particular time limit. I was proposing 10 or 15 days, I thought that was reasonable, but I would be amenable to talking, you know, the City of Portland does 10 days, for example. You know, that allows somebody to have a little time, that they can do other things other than have to shuffle their car around. I just feel like 24 hours and you have to move your car is unreasonable. You can't stay at home for a weekend, for example, without moving your car somewhere. So I'd just like to have an agenda item to discuss that and see if we can update that to a more reasonable time limit. And hopefully, by that time that we have the agenda item, we could get more information from the police department about, you know, how that ordinance works and what's a good timeframe for it.
Counselor Najin, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that we had a tragic incident in our community recently where a four-year-old passed away due to an accident with a firearm. And one of the things that we're encountering in our community overall is just too much gun violence in general. And so, you know, I'm wondering what our resources are for educating people on gun safety and also whether or not we ever run buyback programs. I know the buyback programs don't decrease the amount of homicides that occur, but they certainly do eliminate firearms in homes that where folks are, you know, concerned about, like suicide, for instance, which used to be one of our number-one causes of gun deaths. And it also is a good educational piece as well in outreach. And so I'm just wondering if we run programs for gun buybacks and like what we can offer for gun safety education, like as a community, whether we reach to state level in order to do that, or how we do it.
We do not have any gun back, buyback programs at the police department. I'm seeing you looking at me, so I'm assuming you're asking me that question based on my prior position as a chief.
Yeah.
So no, we don't have that. I can tell you that if someone wants to turn in a firearm, we actually will take them. We've had when folks pass away, you know, an elderly family member will turn them into the police department. If someone is suicidal, we will take them from, the police department is using that yellow flag law. But we have had family members turn guns in for safekeeping when there's a protection from abuse order. The police department, if it's indicated by the judge, will also take custody of those weapons. But we do not have the funds available for, we do not have the funds available for a buyback program. I mean, I know there are various businesses in the Lewiston, Auburn area that will buy guns from folks, but I will tell you that anytime the Lewiston Police Department has a firearm that's been confiscated or been turned over to us from the courts, someone's been convicted of a crime, we do not resell those items, those get melted over in Auburn.
If members of the audience could please refrain from speaking, I would appreciate it.
I appreciate that, thanks for that clarification. I do think that we should possibly see if there is an organization that we can lean on a little bit in order to provide some type of educational outreach within the community, simply because, you know, an 18-year-old can just buy a gun, and they don't need to know how to use it or how to store it or anything, so. But yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Counselor Roy?
Thank you. How, I want to ask the administrator, how do I bring up a revisit of, and I know this is probably not going to be good for a lot of people to hear this, but I'd like to revisit the vote on being closed, the city being closed on Friday. I've had a lot of feedback about that. I do know that this weekend, for example, being closed on Friday, holiday on Monday, if somebody purchases a car on Thursday and can't get into the city, they go without driving a car till Tuesday. So again, people get paid on Thursdays and Fridays. If they can't do their business, I think this is an issue. And I've had a lot of, I say a lot of constituents, but I've had multiple constituents come to me and tell me that this is not working for a lot of people. So I just want to know how we can open up discussions about this, or is this a done deal? That's one thing. And the other thing is, I just want to put out there that I will be having some more discussions on food sovereignty laws, and I want to bring that at a future date for a workshop and all that stuff. But those are two things that I just wanted to throw out there.
Yeah, if administration could get back to us, that would be great.
Yeah, we'll discuss after the meeting roughly. Thank you.
Counselor Glant, or, well, yeah, Counselor Glant.
Just one more. I would like to again have some insight from the police department on what we're going to do with immigration and the situation of working with our federal partners. There's been some traffic and emails and things posted, and some feelings of people in the council who have firm beliefs in one direction, which is 180 from my direction. And I just think I'd like to know where we stand as a city and how we're going to do that and conduct business should our law enforcement partners at the federal level decide that they need assistance. So I'd like some clarification on that, as it's only been email traffic up to this point, and I'd like to have maybe the chief come up front, and we can have a discussion on which direction the city may be moving in. Thank you.
Counselor Sewell? Or did you have your hand up?
I'm getting tired, so I'm, yes, I did have my hand up.
We appreciate your persistence.
I actually just wanted to acknowledge a resident that comes in for public comment quite often. She's been a champion of public health, Ronnie Parity. She has been asking multiple times to have a workshop on public health, safety, and I think that we should give that a try. I don't know how we can go about doing that, but I think it would be very helpful to the public, given what is going on around Lewiston, given the HIV breakout in Bangor, that a public health forum would be a good idea. So.
Perhaps we could get feedback from the Public Health Committee on what that might look like.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be great, thanks.
Further updates from Council or Administration? Saying none, ma'am, a motion to adjourn.
Sumoed.
Counselor Najin, followed by Counselor Glant. Deputy Administrator O'Malley, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 3? Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you for your service, Deputy Administrator O'Malley. Kathy, we will look forward to seeing you soon, and have a wonderful night, Lewiston. Thank you.